Five, we will call ourselves the order. This is the meeting of the Situate Planning Board, August ninth, the year two thousand and twelve. Looking for a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is request to eliminate special permit condition limiting the number of signs for the Jacob Hatch Building on ten new driftway. Before I turn it over to you, Joe, let me make the announcement that I am a member of the Board of Directors of the Knights of Columbus, which is an attractive order to this piece of property, but I have no financial interest in, to the extent that anybody has a concern about my ability to address this squarely and fairly, let me know. Hearing none, I will participate in the hearing, which will give you the opportunity to get a supermajority. Having said all of that, the floor is yours. Introduce yourself.
Great. My name's Joe Scanzillo, and this is Russ Anderson. We represent the owners of the Jacob Hatch Building. And some nine, nearly nine years ago, we came before the planning board in the permitting process to get permits so that we could go forward and build a building. In March of two thousand, the planning board approved our special permit application, and one of the conditions in that special permit application, that condition number eight is the condition that we would like to eliminate from the special permit. That condition is pretty simple. It just says that no more than one freestanding sign identifying the building, not larger than eighteen inches by six feet, which is nine square feet, as described in our blueprints, in a letter that was further describing it, will be basically allowed on the property. But pretty much, having said that, that pretty much limits us and puts us at a substantial difference with just about every, as far as I know, perhaps even every other property in town, in that we are substantially below the requirements and parameters of the zoning assigned by law in, for the town, which states that commercial and business enterprises can have signs up to a hundred square feet and so on and so forth. It's not, it's not our interest, nor is it our motive, to have a bunch of signs on the property. I'm assuming that most of you folks know where the Jacob Hatch Building is, at the roundabout. You can probably tell that the architecture and the real estate and the maintenance of the property is pretty subtle, pretty subdued, and the mindset of the owners is pretty low-key. So it's not that we want to go out and have big flashing type signs. We just want to be treated like basically everybody else in town is. By eliminating that provision, we just basically can follow the zoning, the bylaw, the sign bylaw, like everybody else. And that's fundamentally what we're requesting from the planning board here today, just to be treated like everyone else.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
I think everybody, you know, appreciates the building and admires the building, and the sign that they have is this beautiful, it's granite, isn't it?
Oh, it's granite posts.
Granite posts, well, it's-
On a handcar sign.
It's got a beautiful old-fashioned look to it. Oh, you couldn't find them, okay. It's got a beautiful old-fashioned look to it, but the only things that I think the board might want to concern themselves with are that the picture that you showed looks color-coordinated, you know, it's using kind of a golden brown and a dark brown color. And I think maybe as long as you're willing to do that, maybe the board can kind of write that in as one of the conditions, because it's so much more attractive looking that way.
Yeah, we wanted to-
Like a benefit to the building as well as-
Definitely.
Appearance of the town. It's such a visible location on the rotary. That would be one of the suggestions that I would have. The other one would be, I agree this is smaller than what the zoning bylaw allows, but no business really has a hundred-square-foot sign. I mean, it would just be, it would be like really overwhelming if anybody did have that. So thank goodness everybody is cooperating with that. Some businesses do seem to have signs that do not quite comply with the exact letter of the law, of the zoning bylaw. You go through the harbor, there are a lot of extra signs in terms of, you know, all sorts of situations. So I think it's not a bad idea to say that, you know, there's, you know, there's going to be this one sign, or no more than two signs, or, you know, just to reiterate what the zoning bylaw says. That's my personal, you know, professional recommendation.
If I might, the, fundamentally, I agree with pretty much everything that was said. The purpose of the signed zoning bylaw, as described in the zoning bylaw, is to protect public health and safety, to reduce traffic hazards, insofar, I believe, having a sign identifying the building. We'll do both of those things at the location where it's visible from the roundabout, promote and protect aesthetic value in nature of the town. Well, if we're going to do something that's similar in flavor, which is why you have that particular rendering there, it's an example. It's not necessarily exactly what we want to do, but it may end up being exactly what we do. You can see what type of architecture we favor for the property, and to promote economic development. The note that I sent around indicates that that particular sign that you're looking at is fifty-six square feet. That sign, actually, the backer board is fifty-six square feet. That sign is made up of three smaller signs. Each one is about two feet by eight feet. The sign at the top identifies the Jacob Hatch Building and its address. The middle sign, which is another two-foot by eight-foot section, when there is property for lease on, when there's space for lease in the building, that sign would be up. When there's not space for lease in the building, that sign would not be there. And the bottom sign, it just happens to be Little Steps Learning Center, could be the same for, would be an interchangeable sign promoting a new business that's coming to town, that's occupying our real estate, or a current business such as Citropediatrics or Citropodiatry, or Maureen Hurley's Attorney Office, and so on. That would be interchangeable on the bottom. But the basic, the essence of that particular design shows fifty-six square feet, three separate signs, in a flavor that's consistent with the sign that we have that Laura was describing earlier.
I could do. We operate as a condominium association, and while Joe and I have some of the units, we also have other owners there, Citropediatrics, being mentioned, Citropodiatry. And almost since we opened the building back in, I think, say, two thousand and four, their clients have had some difficulty, particularly new clients, in finding the building, finding how to get into the building. It is somewhat hidden, particularly in the summer, as some of the brush grows in. So it's been, it's been a, you know, pretty regular refrain on the part of those people, particularly those with multiple clients, to try to make the signage somewhat more accessible for their clients. Recognizing the sign that Laura mentioned is very nice, but you really have to be in there to see it. No one is going to see that from the street.
I have a question. This existing sign that's there right now?
Yes.
I moved here in two thousand and six, and as far as I know, it's been there that entire time.
It has.
So can you give me a little background about if there's only one sign allowed? How did this appear?
That sign actually-
Why has it been there for so long?
That sign actually was, mea culpa. That, that sign actually was, when we were under construction, the original sign was that, that big, and it showed the architect and the engineers and so on and so forth. So underneath all of that stuff, and actually the for, the for lease part of that sign, used to say for sale or lease when we were actually selling-
It just says office for lease right now?
Yeah. It used to say for sale or lease, but that was revised. But effectively, those posts and that sign backer have effectively been there since the beginning, since the beginning of construction. A long time ago.
Yeah.
We'd like to make it legal and-
It needs to be done. So the, I just wanted to clarify, because this was something that I wasn't sure of. Are you proposing to take this down and replace it with the sign?
Yes.
Or are you proposing an additional sign with this?
No.
Just to clarify.
We are, to be clear on that, we are proposing to take that sign down, to substitute the sign that you have before you, the other sign-
Right, right.
And move it a little bit further back on the property, away from, away from the fence.
Would it be about the same height overall?
No, it actually, it actually would probably be a little bit lower. Our, the sign that you have before you here is eighty-four inches, and I think that sign is ninety-six. It would be about a foot shorter. Be about, I think it may be even be more than a foot. Might even be two feet shorter than what you've got here.
Is there, have you looked at any other potential locations than right there? I'm just curious, just because I know it is very visually apparent from the rotary, which I guess, I know that's what you're looking for, but maybe something that wouldn't be quite there on the rotary, but a little-
Well, the problem we're having, the problem we've been having for a long time is that since the roundabouts come in, and even when it was just a simple intersection, people would always say, well, I get to this intersection and I don't know what to do. Or, and since the roundabouts have been there, it's just, I get to the roundabout and I don't know where you guys are. So the whole focus, almost all of the focus is that, of the criticism that we've been receiving, the complaints we've been receiving, and it is a, I really believe it's a threat to public safety, is focused around the location of that intersection. So it would almost be counterproductive, productive to put that someplace else, because people would still be lost like they have been for the past eight years.
You'd just go around again.
Yeah, right. But they, they still wouldn't see the sign.
I, I, we don't think it would be as effective at the entrance to the building.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, or-
Relatively narrow there. There's a lot of vegetation, which-
Or I was even thinking, like, where it is now is kind of at, like, the angle, like I said, almost right at the rotary. If it could be, like, if you're looking at this sign, whoops, here, like, a little bit more to the right, but I don't know if that would be possible, or if that would be out of the line. Like, where this is now, like, if you just moved it over to the right?
I think in front of that, there are a number of large trees that are actually on town property. So to slide it too far one way or the other, you're going to put it behind one of the large trees I, what can I make, was I think I'm not sure.
Yeah. And there are some trees on our property that are either dead or dying, and some scrub stuff that'll be cleared out there. But fundamentally, we can't, we can't touch any of the town's trees, and, so we have to position accordingly.
Okay. Well, I, again, I was just asking that more for, see if you'd done, like, studies about other locations, if that would be good for line of sight, or if that was the premier best location.
It actually is, but set back a little bit further from, from the fence a little bit. This has been bantered about for a few years by, by the people who own the property, and nobody wants to change the location, because when elderly patients from Citropodiatry come in, they say, well, I go around the rotary and I see something, but it doesn't tell me what the name of the building is. So it's pretty much, I think we have to stay in that general location, just set back a little bit.
Okay.
I don't have any further questions.
I think my preference would be versus deleting the condition, to actually approve something new, because I feel like then we know what's going to happen there. I don't like surprises, and there is a special permit condition now, so they presented a design. I'm wondering if this might be something to go before the design review committee possibly. It sounds like there's some questions about the location of it and everything, but that would be my strong preference to actually change the condition to say we approve this new sign. It's such a visible location, and I can sympathize with you saying, you know, you want to be treated just like everybody else, but this is a very visible location, and, you know, the design of the building's great. You know, it's a very nice-looking building for Situate and everything, but I'd hate to make a mistake on this and just kind of leave it open, and then something pops up and people say, how did that get approved? I mean, you have gone through the footwork to do a design and everything, and it'd be nice for us just to say, you can do this. Let's bless it, and you're on your way, and no one has to wonder what's going to happen down the road. So that's more a note to the rest of the board, I guess. But I have a little bit, a few questions about the location and materials, and you're mentioning, like, the height of it and things like that, and I'd rather see that pinned down now. I don't know if it's in the plan, but I'd rather approve something very specific. I mean, I don't mind the proposal. I think it looks, it looks nice, and, you know.
I mean, I prefer this over the current sign.
Well, exactly. The, yeah, the current, not allowed sign, but it's-
And that's a lot more helpful to the, to public safety and direction than what's there now.
But it is pretty visible, so when it goes up-
Clearly, I can understand your position, and I would hope that you can understand ours, like, that we would prefer to have, of course, something that is just written exactly as anyone else would have, without any special conditions. And I will just only add this. You're all very familiar with the building, and, you know, many of the things that are there were a part of the original plan, and certainly were approved, but every decision that Joe and I had to make during the construction and thereafter were made with the idea of keeping the character of the building consistent. I mean, you know, it's in our best interest to have signage and plantings and, and paint schemes, et cetera, you know, consistent with the appearance of the building, because, you know, that's important to us, too.
One of the things Russ is alluding to is the fact that we pretty much don't spare any expense for the building. For example, conservation, we were required to put in two-hundred-and-ten plants. We put in well over six-hundred, as a matter of example. To go to your, to your point, if you approve something specific without changing, without eliminating this special condition-
Well, we would. We'd replace it with a new condition.
But then you would probably have to add a long list of other things that, I know this condition doesn't mean, for example, safety signs, handicap parking signs, directional signs, so on and so forth, things that, if you read this condition the way it's written, we can't even have handicap parking signs.
Oh, so you're talking about much more than just this sign?
We, yeah. I mean, technically, we're not supposed to have handicap parking signs, according to this condition.
Okay. Well, we could write that in. I mean, I-
Well, the zoning bylaw, of course, allows that in addition to any kind of advertising sign.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we want to do. We want to be, we want to go and conform it with the zoning bylaw. That's our, that's our goal.
I guess my comment, it sounds like you've done a nice job, and I'm not questioning your, you know, background or your intent to do that and everything, but I'm a strong believer, and well, let's just put it in writing, and then everybody knows. We're all on the same page, and there's no surprises. So that would be my preference. And if we do need to address those other things, we should address them.
How do we know that we're going to get all of them? We'll, we can certainly take our best guess and remember what we think we're supposed to put in a revised condition, but what if we miss something? Come back again and-
Yeah, probably.
What's that? Laura?
I have the same sort of concern. I mean, as I read the zoning bylaw, you could actually have two signs, each a hundred square feet. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's a lot of signage in a very prominent location, which I don't think would do, do the town any favors in terms of visual impact. And I know that that's not your intent, but I'm inclined to say the same thing.
Ninety-four.
I really would rather rewrite the condition. Certainly, it was put in there for a good reason in the first place, probably with something like this situation in mind, not allowing the sort of wholesale use of a lot of sign, signage area. So I guess, I guess I stand in that same position as you do.
And it sounds like we're pretty close to it. They have a design, and, you know, it sounds like you know what you want, so if we can just put a little bit more detail on it, we can get there pretty quickly.
We could certainly write in the rest of this, which is, public safety, directional, obviously barrier-free access is a, is a building code requirement. You have to have those signs, so.
And Laura's excellent on writing conditions, so I don't think we'll miss anything. I don't think it's that complicated, but it is just, you know, so we're all on the same page, and, you know, we know what we're getting, and-
I don't know. I think she wrote condition eight in the first place.
Well, she did a good job. You're back, right?
She just missed us, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Eric?
Mr. Monger, I believe suggests that this is an appropriate thing to put in front of the design review committee, and I concur. We've had a, one of your neighbors across the way recently had a, an issue that came before us, and we frankly didn't like what they did. And we sent them back to the design review committee people to try and ameliorate the problem, and, and the result that came out was, was pretty good, at least in my opinion. And I think that what they came away with after the input from design review was a superior alternative. And I think that to your advantage would be to go to design review, get the input of stellar professional people who are donating their time to the town. And I think that there's every reason to expect that they will assist you in coming up with a, a really good proposal for this, which we will be inclined to approve. And rather than trying to fix something that may not work real well, let's do it right the first time. And so that, those are my thoughts.
Well, for doing it right the first time. The, is there something about that sign design that you have before you that is not appealing, or that you don't like?
We just don't want to become the victims of the law of unintended consequences.
Yeah, let me chip on. I, I understand where you guys are coming from, at least Dan and Eric, but-
My concern is I think I'm holding them to a different standard than I am anybody else that would approve a special permit.
Yeah.
And I guess, and I, I'm not dissatisfied with the proposal, the, you know, the type of sign that you're looking to do, nor am I concerned about the location on it. It's just that I think that-
I'm bringing you into a, holding you to a different standard, not only with condition eight, but two, if I come back up and I modify condition eight, then I'm still holding you a different standard. My approach would be to come back up and basically take condition eight and say, look, you're going to remove the existing construction sign, and that you'd then be required to be compliant to the sign, sign bylaw. So that way they would hold it.
I think that's the wrong way to go about it, but it's-
But if, just to, if they were constructing this building from scratch, or maybe you can give us a background of why that condition was put there in the first place? What was the, I know that's terrible. I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Well, no, it was, it was a long time ago, and I think we were all working very hard on that proposal. It was a big, massive building, at least it seemed that way at the time, and I think there might have been a feeling with such a big building, maybe the needs made for signs wasn't quite as pressing as, otherwise it was a different economy. I mean, there were a lot of, a lot of things that changed in the, in the meantime. I can see now, definitely, there's a need for a sign with, with any office building, any business, and I'm not sure that I would make the same decision again. But that's not to say that, you know, that I wouldn't want to have, you know, the board have, have some control over it. I mean, that's just my, you know, my, you know, that feeling on it. But the, the sign that's there, it's a, it's a really beautiful sign also, you know, I think you have to say, with the granite and the carved wood.
Oh, the Jacob Hatch Building, yeah.
It's a, it's a very good-looking sign.
Back in those days, everybody was very busy. The town hall, the town hall was just swamped, shorthanded and swamped. And I don't know if that's probably still the case right now, even though the economic climate is somewhat different. And there's a lot more going on and a lot more concern about a big property developer coming into town, even though we've been here for a long time, and, and making a mess of a piece of property. I think that's where Laura was, what she was referring to earlier. But that's not the case, as we've proven over the past decade. And let's say, we would prefer just to be held to the same standard as everyone else, knowing who we are and knowing what we do as a matter of routine and as a matter of principle. We're not people who say one thing and do another. We've never been that, ever. And, for example, with the old house that was there, we said that if it was possible to save the old house, we would. And in fact, we did do that at a cost of well over three or four hundred thousand dollars more than we had to do it. But we did do it, because we said we would do it. So, you know, I know you can't take, you can't take a handshake as a guarantee, but that's pretty much the way we feel that we've operated since the beginning.
I would just remind the board that, you know, with the Ice House, when they came through, we viewed that as, you know, the entry to Situate, and the level of scrutiny that that went through, you know, having this go to design review wouldn't be treating them differently. And every special permit is a discretionary permit, so you don't come in and get a special permit and just automatically get the signage. It's a whole design consideration. That's why you have a special permit, to take in the unique factors. So I take exception with, you know, your comment that that would be treating them differently. It's not. Every special permit's unique, and I think that, you know, based on all the conversations we had regarding the Ice House and the importance of that entry to Situate, this is even more visible on the rotary. I just think we'd be doing a big disservice not to spend the time to understand what we're getting and make sure that it's the best design possible.
You know, I don't have a problem with consulting with design folks, because we, we appreciate them and we use them all the time. Not necessarily this design review people, but architects and designers, they, they do add a lot of value to the things that we do daily. I would not have a problem with that. It's just that eliminating the condition is what we're trying to do. To make part of our design something that we would review and go together forward with, with the design review people, I wouldn't have a problem with that, because I'm sure they're reasonably intelligent people.
Well, that would be the idea, is that we would then replace the condition with, here's your new signage, and, you know, and give you the other stuff you're talking about, you know, that should have been in there anyway, the handicap signage and the directional and all that. That sounds like that was kind of probably an oversight.
I don't know if that necessarily is supposed to be in there. I think a lot of that's just, you know, regular zoning laws. And I think what Joe said, and what I was going to say as well, is it's, it's that article that we feel is treating us differently. We have no objection to having our proposed sign, you know, reviewed and approved.
Yeah.
And even input from others, it's, you know, we have no intention of doing so.
Could that be the condition, per se? Like, we hold them to the same standards as everyone else based on the zoning bylaws, but then for any sign that they erect, you know, they have to get approval from the design review committee?
No. I mean, I think what we would do is you'd, you'd basically modify the condition to say that, you know, all of this applies to them just like everybody else, except for with respect to the big sign. You know what I mean? We'd have to go through it piece by piece, but we have to approve what the design committee reviews. They don't have approval authority.
Well-
So it goes to them, and then we have to sign off on it. We can't have, say-
They're advisory to us.
They're advisors, yes. So we can't, we can't draft it that way, but we can basically say, you know, with regard to, you know, the handicap signage, the directional signage, you know, the things. We'll have to go through it and see. They get a free pass on that, but with the big, you know, the big sign, here's what we're approving. This is all you get.
Laura, can I ask if this was approved originally under seven-ten-point-three or seven-ten-point-four?
It was a site plant special permit, as they had-
So what, what, what provision of the signage bylaw applies to it?
It was, the, the condition about the sign was outside of the sign bylaw. I mean, it was more restrictive than what's in the sign bylaw, and I think the reason was-
Well, no, I, that's a, that's a different point from the one I was trying to get at. There's two sections here. One talks about signs by right, basically, in business and commercial districts. The other one talks about signs in business and commercial districts by special permit.
Well, the special permit is only by the Board of Appeals, so it definitely would have been-
So that's not, that's not what we're talking about.
So it was seven-ten-point-three then?
Okay, fine. Because I, it's, you know, all due respect, gentlemen, I absolutely appreciate the integrity that you've shown in the, in the architecture of the building and how you developed that site. And I understand your position, but what we're being shown here is a fifty-six-foot square, a fifty-six-square-foot sign, and we're being asked to approve that as the first increment, I believe, of something that could be as much as two-hundred square feet. If we simply abolish the special condition and revert to the signage bylaw, you have the right to put two-hundred square feet of signage up for that building. And I could certainly see the utility of that, because you've got a multiple tenant situation, and perhaps every attorney, perhaps every doctor, and every other business that's within that building would like its own board. I'm sure I would if I were an architect in that, in that building. And I don't think that this represents reasonably what is very likely to happen, perhaps not even under your ownership, perhaps under a subsequent ownership. I think we can almost bank on two-hundred square feet of signage if we don't, you know, do some, make some other ruling that, that allows it to go the other way.
Let me, because we're running late, so let me come back and see if I summarize what I think we've got. One is, is that I think the feeling, at least, of the board is that there will be no straight, the board wouldn't support a straight elimination of condition eight. What the board would support, as I understand it, would be a, a variation of the existing condition eight, which would define the necessary signage, the handicap access to safety, those sort of things, as well as a single sign that would be replacing the construction sign that currently exists. Is that what the board?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Sounds right.
Now, given that, I think we need to figure out, one is, is come back up, I guess we need to formalize that in a- guess we need to formalize that and vote. And then, secondly, we've got to come back and figure what the process is for, uh, modifying the condition eight.
Right. I think the steps, one, we have to decide whether we want, want to refer this to design review. I mean, clearly this is going to take a second hearing, so if that's the path we want to go, we would refer them to design review, see what they come up with, and then in the meantime draft a proposed condition and come up at a subsequent hearing. So that's, I think that's the first question, is whether we want to refer them to design review. I, I think that is the appropriate thing, so I, I'd go ahead and make that motion that we refer the primary sign to the design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. You get step one.
I guess step two is that we would continue this to our next hearing, and we would, during that time, you know, come up with.
I think it's a discussion rather than a hearing.
I think, yeah, that's what it is, that we just continue this to the next, next meeting.
Or until we have design review's comments before us.
Yeah, we'd have to coordinate, make sure, um, how often do they meet?
They meet about once a month. Um, I mean, I can sometimes get them in, in like a week to ten days, but, you know, not, not all the time. I mean, they, there are only three people, and they've got, um, at least one of them travels quite a bit. So I think within the next two weeks, we're probably pretty good, but I don't think we could necessarily get this on the next planning board agenda.
Are you up against any timeframes for a tenant or anything like that on it? No?
No, not really, other than, uh, little steps is having an open enrollment, uh, period right now, and they want to feel comfortable that if they put a sign up, it wouldn't be a problem. But I, I'm, I'm not sure that they're allowed, as a matter of right, to put a sign on the, on the building, not a freestanding sign or not. I'd have to investigate that.
They, they've got the sign that's there now, that, that big sign is still there now, and I don't think anyone's talking about that going anywhere.
Enforcement action.
Yeah.
So, let's just get it done as quickly as we can, so we can get design review to meet and, and then maybe get you on our agenda in, what, two meetings maybe?
Are you in contact with design review?
Oh, yeah.
And contact with Joe, and that'll work out.
Yeah. And then the next meeting, if you want to continue the discussion, or maybe you don't, you're saying you don't want to take a vote on that.
I don't think we need to. I mean, it's, we'll come back up, and once you've got the time with design review, we'll put you on the next meeting.
Good.
Okay, does that work? Okay.
Good. Uh, thank you for your comments. They're well taken, and, uh, very good comments, and we'll move forward.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. It's now a few minutes after eight. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for accessory dwellings, special permit on thirty-three Garden Road. We have the applicant. Reintroduce yourself. Just, just for the record, we opened up this hearing, uh, at our previous meeting, but we, because we did not have the availability of the five full-member voting board, it's been continued to tonight. And this is a special permit requiring a super majority. Fine with me, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is John Townsend. I'm with Dan Castle Blue, and I'm in cap with Maria Marcelino in regards to, um, the proposed accessory dwelling at thirty-three Garden Road. Um, the plant, uh, you do have the packet, I believe, in plans, uh, in front of you. The, uh, existing building is, uh, measured to the outside of the perimeter walls, approximately, um, one thousand ninety square feet, by my surveyor's estimation. Proposed building, um, accessory dwelling, measured the same way from the outside of the perimeter walls, would be seven hundred and forty-five point six square feet. That's a, um, thirty-one point five, or thirty-one feet, six inches by, um, twenty-three feet, eight inches. The, um, you have, I believe in your packet, an affidavit confirming that the owner of the property will occupy the property. Um, the existing parking shown on the site plan, on the right-hand side of the existing structure, will remain. Um, that driveway area, not including the garage, is eighty-three feet long. Uh, it's twelve feet wide at the, uh, where it intersects the street. It's about eight feet wide at its, uh, narrowest point, average of about ten feet wide. Um, the new parking for the accessory dwelling, shown directly to the right and, and front, you know, the front and right of the proposed structure, is forty-six feet long, uh, by twelve feet wide. That allows for the parking of about three or four cars, three cars probably in the, uh, proposed driveway, and approximately four, uh, straight in in the existing. Um, the existing home is three bedrooms, one bath. The accessory dwelling, as you see in the layout there, is two bedrooms, one bath. Uh, the property is on town sewer. The utilities will be separated, uh, to each of these structures. Um, the proposal has been discussed with the Board of Health, the Conservation Department, Building Department, DPW, uh, Water and Sewer, with, um, uh, no, no negative response. For many of them, there, there's no, um, conservation, uh, wetlands in the area to be concerned with. The Board of Health is obviously, um, fine with the sewer connection, uh, the DPW. Um, I believe that the, uh, property, the proposal meets the purpose and criteria of, uh, section five thirty point one and five thirty point two. Um, and I do want to just make sure that I have, um, I know that we, we've mentioned we're running a little late, and there's, um, some public discussion. I want to make sure I have, uh, opportunity to respond to any questions or comments that come up.
What we'll do is, when you have, you complete your presentation, we'll then hear from the town planner. If you have questions to the board, then we'll open up to the public. And then the, then the board will, will be open there. I mean, you'll have plenty of opportunity to address the questions as they arise.
Wonderful.
But they'll go, they'll go through the chair.
Um, speaking with Laura earlier in the week, uh, the, she wanted me to clarify the, uh, occupancy plans of the site. Um, and, uh, as Maria had stated in the affidavit, she plans on occupying the site, um, full-time. The, uh, her plan is to occupy the, um, if approved, the proposed accessory dwelling, uh, as soon as a certificate of occupancy is issued by the building department, at which time she would remodel the, um, existing dwelling, uh, because it's a, a little larger, obviously, and, um, a little, uh, better for raising a small family. She has two young children. Um, the existing tenants in that, uh, in the structure of thirty-three Garden Road currently have been notified that they're going, going to need to, uh, find alternate housing, um, you know, in preparation, should this proposal be approved. Um, and the, unfortunately, Maria Marcelino's mother is, uh, has Alzheimer's disease. She's, uh, doing very well at the moment. Um, and this, what this proposal does for Maria is it gives her an opportunity, uh, to occupy the space, and at some point in the future, when the, um, can, if the condition, or when the condition progresses, the mother and father would have, uh, an opportunity to occupy the, uh, accessory dwelling structure there on the left. In the meantime, um, she could use it as a, uh, her thought is that she could use it as a rental, uh, property in the proposed accessory dwelling. The, um, just want to make sure I explained that clearly. Is, um, there'll be, there'll be questions, but, uh, I want to make sure I, I do explain that clearly for everyone. The proposal itself meets all the required, dimensionally meets all the regulations of the zoning bylaw as far as setback and coverage and open space and parking. Uh, that's the end of my presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Laura?
Um, as you know, the, um, accessor, the, yeah, accessory dwelling is a, um, is, is, uh, something that can be approved by a special permit, um, from the planning board. There really are not many requirements for it. Um, it can't be any greater than seven hundred fifty square feet or forty percent of the primary dwelling. So in this case, seven hundred fifty square feet is, is what's allowed, and it seems to fall within that, um, within that size range. I believe it's seven hundred and forty-six square feet. The, um, the property owner has to provide parking, and there's a driveway, you know, it looks like there's going to be plenty of parking. Um, and the applicant has to, the owner has to live on the property, and, um, although it's, um, you know, I suppose, um, not completely clear whether she's living there right now, she intends to live there with her family, and that's, um, that's all the bylaw really requires. Um, so, um, that being said, um, you know, I think this is a, uh, it's a relatively new development, that accessory dwellings can be on, you know, independent of single-family houses in this zoning district. When that was originally thought of, it was for the, uh, R-two and R-one zoning districts, but the bylaw was changed in two thousand and ten, and now this is something that, um, anyone can do in, you know, in any location, um, where there's room to, to have, you know, a separate dwelling. So, um, y, y, you know, I think it's, um, it's, uh, something that, you know, you can look at from the standpoint that throughout Sand Hills, there are a lot of homes on less than ten thousand square feet of land area. Um, and, um, you know, whether, uh, y, you know, whether, y, y, you, you, the, the, the town is kind of in a, um, it's like a split, um, personality situation, where the zoning says ten thousand square feet per unit, but the accessory dwelling right now really, um, doesn't say that. It says you can have a separate structure in order to provide for some of the housing needs of the town, um, regardless of what your lot size is, as long as you meet the setbacks. And it does appear that this house meets the setbacks, so, um, on the face of it, um, it looks like it would probably comply with, with the bylaw. But, you know, that being said, you know, there's, not to, you know, jump ahead of, you know, whatever the public is here to bring out, or, you know, whatever other issues might, you know, come through the public hearing. I think, you know, you certainly have to keep an open mind and see what you, uh, see what you feel like at the end.
Oh, um, I guess I don't have any really specific questions, other than, I was just curious why there was the bulkhead going down to the basement? That seemed kind of odd, like the stairway. Oh, I'm sorry. There's, in the.
Are we on mic?
Are we, should we be amplified or?
I don't, is that better?
Well, the green lights are on.
Green lights on, but I don't know.
What that means.
Push.
Oh, the, the mics basically go onto the cable. They, they're not to amplify the speaking here.
We'll just try to speak louder.
So, in the, the accessory dwelling unit plan, there was an outside entrance down to the basement, I believe? Did I see that correctly?
Yes.
So I was just curious why that was an outside entrance? I mean, it has.
Well, there's also an inside entrance.
Oh, was there?
There are stairs that go down.
This is from memory, so.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a set of stairs in the inside, um, that you see in the layout plan heading down, and the bulkhead is obviously very helpful for, um, you know, gardening equipment and things. They have to drag it through the house and.
Okay.
Or, yeah, right adjacent to the, uh, to the foyer coming in.
All right. Yeah, um, the, other than, I mean, that's really, I mean, the only questions I had is really, like, we can't really control the architecture per se, just the setbacks and so forth, so. Oh, and the other question you, uh, I think you answered it, was the fact of, until this, that her mother potentially would live there, she would, she looks at renting that out?
Until such time that the, that the mother's condition would require her to, you know, have a little more attention from her daughter, yes.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, just to clarify, we're under a special permit procedure, right? This is special permit accessory dwelling that we're under? Okay. So, um, just to put a point on it, it is, it is a discretionary permit, so we do have the ability, regardless of whether it meets the specific things in the accessory bylaw, to put conditions on it and use our discretion in approving this or not approving it. So it's not strictly just, you know, they meet the square footage and they get it.
It's not as of right.
Just so everybody's clear on that.
Correct.
Um, you know, my concern with it, just looking at it, when I first looked at it, I, I thought, you know, compared to a lot of the accessory dwellings we've seen, um, usually the house footprint looks substantially bigger, just from a plan standpoint compared to the accessory dwelling. Usually it, it seems to be noticeably smaller. When I look at this, at least the footprint anyway, it's almost the same size as the existing house, which causes me some concern. Um, one of the, one of the provisions in the accessory dwelling bylaw talks about how, um, the accessory dwelling shall be clearly a subordinate part of the single-family dwelling. Um, you know, I think the intent, there's somewhat of a visual intent there, too, that this isn't meant to be a way to get a second house on a small lot. So I'm a little bit concerned about that and setting the precedent. Um, I used to live in Sand Hills, and, you know, a lot of the houses that are there now already seem kind of cramped on the lots they're already on, so, um, I am a little concerned about this one more than, I think it's a little different than most of the ones that we've seen in the past, and, you know, I, I think we do need to consider the precedent this sets, and it is a discretionary permit. Um, you know, just glancing at the plan from what I can tell, I mean, I think I would drive by this lot with these two houses on there and think it's just a, two five thousand square foot lots. You know, it wouldn't appear to be accessory to me. It, it, it looks like a lot of the houses that are there now, so I'm a little concerned. I'm on the fence. I want to hear what everybody else thinks about it, but I'm, it does give me some pause, this application.
Can I clarify, uh?
Sure.
Let's finish the board, and then.
Okay, I just wanted to respond specifically.
Robert?
Uh, certainly under five thirty point two D, uh, it seems to me this complies with that. I know it, uh, I know what we're talking about when we say it's, uh, very similar in size to the existing building, and that is a little bit different than what we usually see, but I don't think I can fault it for that necessarily. I think it's very significant that this is a double lot, and that even though you may visually now see, once this is constructed, two homes on, on this piece of land, uh, it's going to be not any different than the situation of the home next door to it, the situation of the home behind it, the situation of many homes along, uh, along the roads that, that make up this area. Uh, it's not as though we were trying to, to take a, uh, a five thousand square foot lot and put an accessory dwelling on it. That I would find, even if, even if somehow the setbacks could be met, I'd find that objectionable. Um, I, I can't fault this from a planning point of view. I really can't.
Robert?
I would echo, uh, the previous statements. I have nothing more.
Just an echo.
Just an echo.
I guess, I guess I come down and, and I get the same concerns that Dan does. I think that, uh, particularly five thirty, uh, two dot F is, is, I don't see it as a subordinate part of it. Um, what I really see is, in my own mind, basically creating a, a, a five thousand square foot lot with putting another house on it. So in effect, that's what it would look like, that's what it would act like, um, on it. And, and I guess I'm concerned that if, let me step back. If, if I had a situation where I had the two buildings already on the lot, one of which was to become a primary residence and the other was to become an accessory resident, accessory to it, then I guess I'd be more understanding. But in effect, what I'm doing now is putting the house down, and I'm creating, in my own mind, I'm creating a five thousand square foot lot with a house on it. Um, and I think that's a greater density than what I've got elsewhere in the neighborhood for the, for the similar type lots, uh, on it. So I guess that's where I come down. So, let's, address the comments of the board, and then we'll open up the vote.
Sure.
One more comment following up on yours, but I, I guess right now the, the lot size requirement, am I correct? It's ten thousand now everywhere, but the Sand Hills five thousand lots are grandfathered.
They're grandfathered.
So going forward, you know, there are no more five thousand square foot lots in Situate, so.
Right, if you have two five thousand square foot lots adjacent, good.
Yeah. So, so I guess, you know, your comment about, you know, for a similar lot, this would. Yeah, so, so I guess, you know, your comment about, you know, for a similar lot, this would be more dense and you're right, than what's allowed because we're at a ten thousand square foot lot standard now. So, even though there are some five thousand square foot lots adjacent to the, adjacent to this that I can see, that's not a condition allowed in Situate anymore. So, we put an end to that because of the density, so. Um, so, you know, I go back and forth. I heard the argument about we want to treat you like everybody else, but actually going forward, you know, ten thousand square foot lot is the minimum, so that's all I had for now.
And I also just wanted to add one question. Again, this is more just about like the character because this is the, the existing house elevation and this is the proposed elevation. Was there any thought or consideration trying to minimize this elevation?
Yes.
Like, for instance, putting the gable in the front as opposed, so it would match? So, at least it would be visually consistent?
Yeah.
Cause to me, they, it's kind of, they, they, this one sticks out because it doesn't seem to fit.
Right. The, um, if I can address a few of those items, um, one is that, that the existing structure is, uh, forty-four and a half feet in depth, twenty-four and a half feet in width, and the proposed is thirty-one and a half feet in depth and twenty-three point six seven, twenty-three feet, eight inches in width. So, although they're approximately similar width, you know, the, the new is a, a foot smaller, the, uh, the new would be almost thirteen feet, actually exactly thirteen feet, totally shorter on the depth, okay? The, this one, um, error that we made on the, on the plan from the pack, and I, I wanted to clarify that on the, on the plan here. In order to stick with the subordinate language in, in five thirty, um, the front elevation is this elevation here.
The gable does, does face the street, right?
Right, this faces the street here. There's also some language in there that addresses, uh, side entry, which we thought worked very well for this dwelling. A, it gives us a side entry where, uh, you know, Maria from the existing home could keep an eye out, you know, a big fear of Alzheimer's, you know.
So, it'd really be like this?
Person would wander off, and that gives visual, you know, visually gives, um, a, a good view of coming and going out of that, out of that, uh, proposed structure. Okay, so it's subordinate in the way that the, that the, um, entrance is on the side, smaller in front, much shorter in overall depth and a little shorter in overall width. Um, and also setback on the lot, um, to, to give it that subordinate look as well. The, I believe that the footprint that you see here, the, is, um, makes it look a little larger because of the way that the surveyor outlined the entire footprint, um, but it's, it's thirteen feet total depth, shorter than, I guess, shall it be existed?
Well, what did the thinking come back up with, provide a separate unit as opposed to adding on to the existing unit?
Because she has two small children and right now she's living with her parents in a, in a, in their home in Situate and it's, and just as a lot for the parents, for her mother specifically with, uh, Alzheimer's to have the commotion of the kids. A lot of, I have two small kids, a lot of active, you know, it's separate, but, uh, also able to be monitored all the time, which is, you know, you want to do that position.
Questions on the public? Raise your hand, introduce yourself so that we know who you are and ask your questions.
Oh.
You're, you're first.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay, hi. Um, I'm Barbara McFen and I moved here two years ago. Uh, I, I love living in Situate and I love my neighborhood so much. I live right next door to thirty-three Garden Road.
Thirty-five.
I'm at thirty-five. And it was my understanding that this new bylaw was to prevent overcrow, overcrowding and overpopulation of, of streets and that, um, if they're allowed to put a house on that five thousand square foot lot, there are eight others in that one block area that could do the same thing. So, um, we're really concerned about anybody establishing, uh, another home on a ten thousand square foot lot that, where there's already one home that could be rental property forever. So, um, we just feel like it's detrimental to our neighborhood because it, say, if you allowed her to do that, we don't believe there's a need, um, for her to have a separate dwelling there. And if you allowed her to do it and eight other people on the street did the same thing because they wanted to have rental income, then we'd almost, eh, eh, one-third more population, density, cars, et cetera. Um, and I thought the purpose of that ten thousand square foot rule was to keep that from happening. So, uh, we're asking you to take a really close look at the situation so that it doesn't set a precedent. And, um, the only other thing I want to say is, I, I moved here from West Virginia and I moved into a neighborhood twenty years ago that was eighty percent homeowners and twenty percent rentals. And in the twenty years, that shifted and it completely changed the neighborhood. And I left after twenty years there because I'd been broken into four times and my house had been, um, vandalized. Because what happens is, um, it's not a good situation when you have more rentals than actual homeowners.
Yeah, I think that's a conjecture that, that I really.
Yeah, I'm just telling you, my experience, it's why I'm so passionate about not allowing that to start happening on the street where there's all these rentals. We already have four rentals out of fourteen.
Point, point, sir. Anyone else? Sir?
I'm down, Stuart, of course, I know my lab, we're right behind, um, the, the, the property. Um, uh, I would like to ask a question first. I, I haven't, I've, I've heard description of the property, but underneath the bylaws, are there specific intentions for the bylaw or accessory dwelling? I haven't heard what the intention is or what the, what the exception is that would, would allow this accessory dwelling. Uh, my understanding is that if you are in financial strife and that you may lose your home, this may be something that will provide you some, some rental money so you can keep your home, uh, which I wouldn't understand if you can afford to build another home, why wouldn't you be able to afford to keep your home? Um, so I, I would like to hear, uh, what the premise is that allows this to happen? Uh, in the bylaws, there's some specific, um, specific things for that?
I want to address which sections of five thirty one you would comply with.
Yeah, I think it's, um, to be honest, I think it's most of them. Um, A is to provide, to provide an opportunity for homeowners who can no longer physically or financially maintain their single-family home to remain in homes that they might otherwise be forced to leave. Um, Maria's intention is to occupy, um, the property. The additional structure gives her wherewithal to, um, to have, you know, some, uh, short-term, to have some rental income attached to it. And that, um, I think it also speaks to the concern about having a lot of renters in the neighborhood. It's, I think, very well known that an o, owner-occupied, um, property, even if there's a rental on that property, is much more apt to be, um, safe and secure and properly maintained. Uh, in addition, it allows, um, the flexibility for the owner, um, to take care of her aging parents in the future. And, and I think that that's, that's also very tied in closely with five thirty point one A. Um, the five thirty-one point, uh, B is, is not, is not applicable, but, uh, provided various types of housing to meet the needs of the residents and workers. I think that is applicable. This is a varied type of housing for a very specific reason that I've discussed as far as the occupancy and, and the future, uh, condition of her mother. Um, and to protect the stability and property values and character of the single-family residential neighborhood. Uh, and I, I believe that it does that as well with the, uh, owner occupancy on the, on the site. Uh, and to legitimize conversions, to enable the town to monitor conversions for code compliance. Obviously, that, that would, um, you know, if, if she were to move her mother in with her into the existing home and you're trying to convert a small home, this is, that's exactly what that, it's, in my opinion, eh, what that, uh, item is talking about. It's making sure that it's done right, that it meets the Mass State Building Code, that all life safety, you know, requirements are adhered to. So, I think it's the, that's the vast majority of, of those items listed under five thirty point one.
Thank you. Sir?
I don't understand why we're discussing two five thousand square foot lots and one ten thousand square foot lot.
No, that we're discussing, it's one ten thousand square foot lot.
One thousand, yep, exactly. Any zoning, it's a single lot.
Okay.
How are we gonna jam another house right next to it? Where's the advantage of having a separate dwelling? In my eyes, if someone was ill, I'd rather have it attached, for safety purposes. I don't understand the separate dwelling and why it needs to be separate at all.
Address that, John?
Uh, I think I addressed that. The, the, um, owner has small children. She needs to care for the small children. She intends to do that in the primary structure. Um, she has short-term, uh, rental needs in the accessory dwelling and long-term care needs for her parents in the accessory dwelling. And it accomplishes all those goals for her, uh, should it be approved.
May I ask a question? I, i- if I remember correctly, the owner is currently living off-site in another house with her parents. And the, what is going to be the main dwelling there is currently being held as a rental.
That's right.
And we're hearing that, at least for the time being, the accessory building will also be used as a rental.
Not without her occupying the property.
Uh, no, no, I understand that.
Right.
So, she's gonna move from where she's at now into the main building and rent the, the, uh, the accessory building after it's built?
She's gonna move into the accessory building when, the accessory dwelling, when that occupancy permit is approved, at which time the, the primary dwelling would be vacated.
Mm-hmm.
And she'll be able to apply for a building permit, separate building permit, to renovate the, the, uh, primary structure. And then at that time, she can do the renovations required, uh, that she feels are required since property, the residential property.
Thank you.
Me, it's Mark Hall. I'm at, uh, or at like thirty-eight Garden Road. I mean, maybe just some rebuttal comments. Um, actually, um, the applicant has made at least three different scenarios on why this was happening. So, this is the third one we're hearing about her mother with Alzheimer's. We actually heard originally, um, because we made an overture to her soon after we were notified of the letter to see what was happening. And in a conversation with Barbara, she said that she was going to evict the current tenants and move in and then rent that new property, um, as a, uh, corporate rental. Um, she told the tenants that she was gonna move them into it, at least that's what they told us. So, at this point, we're concerned that the rationale for doing this kind of doesn't hold water, at least over the last couple of weeks. Also, that she's really not ever lived in the house and she bought it. She's been renting it. She's not a member of our neighborhood. If she had lived there and has an infirm family member and she needs to add on to her house to make an in-law apartment, that seems that that's a, a need, a physical need or a financial need that she'd have to do.
The deed is dated two thousand six.
Right. She's been writing it for at least four years that I know of. And I might, and I don't know that she lived there before that. I don't know that she ever lived there. I've been living there five years. I, I've never seen it there, so I don't, I don't know that. I can't speak to that. But I, but I am concerned that she lives with her parents now with an, for her mother, but she's gonna move. It, it doesn't kind of just make a lot of sense to us and it's not our place to make sense of it. Our place is we're concerned about the purpose of the bylaw, meaning financial or physical harm, so that you're gonna lose your family home. This clearly isn't a family home. It's rental property. Secondly, then her saying she's gonna live there, you know, how do we ensure that over time? And I must agree with Mr. Monner. Is that it? Mon, oh, Monger? Monger? I'm sorry. It's gonna look like another house. And although I live very close, I'm like eight feet from my neighbor, but my house exists. I'm not building a new one on a tiny lot. So, those are, some of our concerns. And I was also to ask if you saw the letter we sent, which pretty much outlines, you know, what our concerns are.
We all have that.
Question.
Christopher Patch, eighty-two Normal Act, J, I represent her wife, uh, her mother-in-law. She couldn't make it tonight.
Forty-two?
At thirty-two Poly Road, which is directly behind this lot. Um, and our concern obviously is with the density situation here. Um, what I have here in front of me is a picture of a house that sits to the left of my mother-in-law. This house directly abuts and actually through a garage that was later connected, whether it was proved or not. This, this house now sits right now in a butt, her lot line. Um, we've got some very, very tight, uh, areas, especially down along Poly Road, that, um, if, if you're lucky, if you've got, if you've got eight feet between houses. So, what, if you, if you actually took a bird's eye view of this two or three block area, everybody's butted up against each other. And all this is gonna do is put another house on a five thousand square foot lot. And, I mean, that, it's the only way to look at it. And the confusion in the bylaw, four hundred says ten thousand square feet and that's it. You get in a five hundred and the same girl having it in our three district. They contradict each other. So, the question is what takes precedent? The bylaw for the accessory dwelling while the bylaw that was passed a long time ago that said ten thousand square feet, single-family home? So, this, what's happening, we're, we're putting a single-family home on a five thousand square foot lot. Not a really an accessory dwelling that can we just sneak in because we meet the setbacks. I mean, I've got an empty lot right next to me right now. I got a five thousand square foot lot. I'm thinking to myself, boy, if they could do this, why can't I do it and make a little money on the side? I, I really don't see this as being a necessity. I, 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 I'm really confused as to why they just couldn't go up or why they couldn't just bump out. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. And, and the, and the lot itself, I mean, you guys are looking at it from a standpoint of a plan. That's the lot. So, you're gonna put another house, that existing house is eight hundred ninety-seven square feet. You're putting one in there at seven forty-five and, and a driveway in between. And the existing house basically has, uh, exactly eight feet, which is an existing driveway where they butt up to this woman here. You're just basically making it more dense. And I'm sure when the accessory dwelling law for R one, R two was passed, that made sense. You know, getting it into an R three district, well, if you've got ten thousand square feet and this is gonna be behind your house and it's not gonna affect anybody to the left, to the right, or behind you, that makes sense. This doesn't make sense that you're butting up against Alan here, you're butting up against, I'm sorry.
Barbara.
Barbara. And, and my mother-in-law is right behind her and then we, we, we've got this monstrosity of a home that was allowed to be built to add it on to the point where now it's, it's basically one entire, it's taking the entire footprint of a lot. So, it's a density issue and that's really our concern.
Hi, Jean Bryant from thirty-eight Garden Road. I just, if I could make two comments. I grew up in Sand Hills on Rebecca Road, um, and my parents still live there. So, I'm very familiar with the houses being very close. Um, of course, when I grew up there many years ago, it was mostly beach community and summer bummers, as we recall. Um, and I understand, as my parents did, their house is now a year-round home, but it's only occupied in the summer. And I think the noise level and the tolerance for the amount of people that inhabit that space in the summer is tolerated because a good portion still remains people who are only there in the summer. Our street happens to be, um, a neighborhood that people go to work every day. And when the ni, noise level, when I can hear my neighbors talking on their deck at ten o'clock at night and I'm trying to sleep because they're eight feet away and I have to go to work in the morning and their teenagers are out on the deck and I have to get up and go ring the bell and ask their parents, would you please tell them to go in the house? You know, in the summer, I can tolerate, you know, when do you start not being a pain in the neck, you know? Um, and teenagers deserve the right to be social and whatnot, but. Um, my second comment is, I think this gentleman pointed out, if you're willing to rehab the building after you build the accessory dwelling, why not just go up and make it either a two-family or a second unit upstairs? Or something that at least goes up and keeps in within the neighborhood. A lot of houses that were small singles have been built on top of and added to. And so she's going to spend the money to build a building and then rehab an existing building, why not just do it all at once and go up and make it a little less obvious, a little less dense, a little less crazy? And it, and it would be probably better controlled rental if you've got somebody living on your head or below you, just in terms of the noise and the tolerance for what you're probably on there.
Anyone else?
Hi, Kim Stewart, I'm at forty-seven, um, more alive, we're right next to them. I have a concern about privacy. This tree here is, which was taken from my backyard, this is a tree that is on her property line. I believe it's, it's on the property line, I'm not sure if it's on ours or on hers. It's a very large tree, and, um, when, if this is approved, this building will, this tree will have to be eliminated. Therefore, I'll have absolutely no privacy whatsoever between my house and her property. Plus, there's other smaller trees in her yard, which will also have to be eliminated as well. And, um, it says that this accessory dwelling will be eight feet off the property line, which probably may be another five or six feet from my garage would be there. I'm concerned about privacy as well. So that falls on the density issue, I guess.
I'm Susan Lyons at forty, Garden Road. I have a couple of concerns.
Forty?
Forty. One of them is that, uh, the purpose of the bylaw that it seems that they're applying under is so that they can physically and financially remain in the home and not be forced to leave the home. So I guess that confused me a little bit because they don't live there now. No one's gonna force them to leave the home that they are in now. So I'm a little confused on that. Also, um, with, again, I thought one of the purposes of this was to put an accessory dwelling to create rental property to solve the financial hardship issue. But it seems like, what I'm hearing is that there'll be this short-term period, and who knows how long that'll be, and that then the intention is for the parents to move in, so I don't know how that, um, you know, speaks to the financial aspect of it. That's, she no longer is renting that property presumably if her, her parents moving in and one of them's sick. I mean, I don't know that that's really a rental situation. Just to echo to what some of the other folks have said is, it is a very dense neighborhood already. I mean, and the minimum lot is ten thousand square feet, the law's been that way for a while. And we already have homes that are, um, you know, on five thousand square foot lots, but they were built before the law was changed. Um, we just feel like the law was changed for a good reason, and it is already a very dense neighborhood. And we'd hate to see, you know, more and more houses just sort of be shoehorned in there. We are concerned as well as setting a precedent, as one of the gentlemen in back said, if, if this is allowed to go in on such a small lot, then what's to stop everybody on the street from going in? And what, what our research has seen is most of the accessory dwelling special permits that have been granted in recent history are under very different circumstances in this, they're not lots this small, they're much bigger lots. And there are also, um, you know, other circumstances have been, somebody's trying to put up a garage or a barn or something like that that's not a home to live in, and that there's just some space problems that need to be dealt with. So it, it seems that recent approvals haven't been really even close to this set of circumstances. And to us, you're just circumventing the, the ten thousand square foot minimum by putting this house in there. And again, I, I just, I'm a little confused about which the purpose of that, if it's for the parents to move in later. I'm also concerned if, that if the applicant, um, is gonna move into the accessory dwelling and then rehab the original house, I mean, is there a timeframe there? She's not gonna occupy it and, and have a rental yet, so, you know, is there a time limit there? How long does she, um, is allowed to take to rehab this and then prove that she's gonna occupy it?
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a lot to respond to, the, um, she, she will, just in response to the last comment, she will occupy the property, uh, as I said, from the moment that a certificate of occupancy would be granted on the accessory dwelling. I, I also, in response to some of the other cases, you know, that have been, that have been, um, heard for accessory dwellings, as she mentioned, the, um, the rental aspect of the, um, bylaws, I think specifically, um, addressed in the one twenty-nine Stockbridge Road, uh, application, May third, two thousand twelve, and also the one thirty Country Way application. And, and there are smaller, there are others, you know, lots of, of this size and very large lots where these have been approved. Leave, I don't have the numbers here, but I believe that, uh, Grove Street and Broad Lane lots may have been in the same range. The, I neglected to mention, and I should have, that, um, we distributed a letter to all of the interested parties that were here at the last hearing to invite them to come in to, um, to my showroom, uh, my office in Marshfield, and, um, review the proposal, uh, review any specific questions or issues, all aspects of, of the design, of the site work, of the utility work, um, so things such as the, the issue with the, uh, with the tree, I think, those are the type of things that we wanted to try and flush out and answer at those, at that meeting. I, I did speak with, um, Kathy, uh, after distributing that letter, but everyone declined to, to meet, uh, either in a group or in person about, um, about this proposal. I'd like to ask, I, I'm not sure which tree it is that you're concerned with, is it, uh, did you say that on, between thirty-two and?
It's the largest tree in the lot.
The back of the lot between thirty-two?
It's, it's not the back, it's up the middle of the lot. It's, uh, it's probably two-thirds on, on, uh,
This is my garage.
Yeah, probably in about a third of the house.
And this is your garage here?
It's a, it's probably about a hundred-year-old tree. So it's no small tree.
Right here. So it's right here.
You're not, you're not gonna dig a, you know, a trench next to it.
It's getting increasingly, and that would have to go, because it's, you're both, are pretty strong. It's quite significant.
Yeah. Let's have a seat.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we got a lot of people talking, I want a simple meeting.
I'd like to, uh, you know, the, the tree, it's, I don't believe that we're taking down any large-scale trees, uh, as far as this proposal is concerned, the, the two trees that are affected, I tried to, uh, I had the surveyor detail specifically. It's, there's a small grouping of trees, that's, as you can see right in the middle of the proposed accessory dwelling and one in the driveway. It was my understanding that, that those are, uh, small tree groupings, that, that it's not that very large, very old tree on the side.
You've not shown the tree on your, your plot.
It's not on.
It's, yeah, it's not on this.
Okay, well then, it's my understanding that it's, that it's not affected aside, aside from pruning. And again, it's just my understanding that it's not affected by the proposal because it's, it was, uh, you know, we directly asked the surveyor to address any trees that would be affected by the proposal, so that's why he showed.
Basement floor for this drug dwelling?
Yeah, it's a full basement. In addition, uh, I, I, you know, I think that, I understand and hear a lot of the, um, opposition to the, uh, to the project, but I, I also think that it's, um, more of opposition to the, to the bylaw than the actual project. And I don't know, you know, what that specifically means for my proposal, but I do think it's more of a, of an issue with the bylaw than it is with the, with, um, with the proposed project at all. And if I, if, um, if there are, you know, if there's further deliberation needed and, and, and another meeting needed, I would like the opportunity to clearly show, maybe with some color renderings, that the proposed structure would be subordinate to the existing, because I really do believe it will be. Uh, that's the way it was designed, and I think a lot of the features of, of how it's situated in the lot, how the, uh, gable end faces the road, and how it's set back in the lot, will really be displayed in a, in a rendering, if, if that's, if that's what the board wishes to see.
I got some more questions, gentlemen in the back.
If this is, meets all the guidelines, the applicant's claim that she's lived, can I live there to be able to afford the office? Can the board put a condition on you? That if she does not occupy the property, they lose the occupancy permit for the accessory dwelling?
If she does not live on the property in, in the main dwelling, in effect, that violates a special permit, which means that, that, that building doesn't exist. So you can't rent it.
Someone cannot be occupied.
Can't be rented, right?
Well, it has to be an owner, it doesn't have to be her, has to be, we can put the condition that it be owner occupied, yes. So we can put that condition on, but it would be unusual to designate a specific person has to.
No, no, I'm not asking for a person.
Yeah. And we usually do that on our conditions, we put owner has to occupy the primary residence.
That's what I heard, whatever you could have a condition of.
Well, we don't, we don't put that, we just put it as a condition in the permit. So I, basically what you're saying's correct, we can put a condition like that on there.
I just wanna say, he referred to two, two, um, accessory dwelling, um, decisions you made on two properties, it was additions. And we would, we don't want, we don't want a separate building, but an addition, if that's something that she needs for her mother, would be fine with us, because it would still look like a single-family dwelling and not two houses on the ten thousand square foot property. But that's not what she's interested in. But, so anyway, I just wanted to make sure, make it clear that when he said you've approved that, it's, yeah, Country Way and Stockbridge Road, those were both additions for, one was a daughter and son-in-law, one for in-laws. Not, at some future time, it'd be for the in-laws, um, and it was an addition. She's not asking for an addition, she's asking for a rental property.
To clarify, th- those two decisions did, though, discuss rentals. They did dis, they did say if rented, additional parking or whatever the concern was would be provided. So my reference to those properties, and forgive me if I wasn't clear, but that was in response to the rental aspects of the discussion.
Can you, since that was, I thought that was a good point, can you explain again why she wants the separate units? Uh, in the sense of, I mean, you could still have a completely separate unit, but having it be an addition. I don't understand the rationale or what the, maybe you can help me understand why she was saying to have it be detached as opposed to just attached?
Yeah, I believe, like, her, it's go, uh, recent experience of living in the home with her parents, with two small children, knowing, you know, that, that, you know, what issues that, that brings up, provided her initially to, to, um, wanna have a detached, um, structure for the accessory dwelling. It also helps to provide, like, as I said, the short-term, uh, you know, an easier, um, rental income as far as the short-term, for, because the mother is not in a condition now, I, I heard the word infirm used, she's not in that condition right now.
Right, but I guess the, they can be completely separate units, but share a wall, or not even like be able to walk through them. So like, what's, I don't understand the issue in the sense of, uh, the, the children. Cause I mean, they wouldn't be able to enter into the other unit anyway. It's completely, it's not like it's another bedroom, they just open up the door and they're there.
Or you could put the door there and simply leave it locked for future use.
Understood, but I, I, I don't, I mean, I think she was, you know, what I was instructed to do was to, was to design, um, this separate unit in, in compliance with the guidelines of the bylaw, and that's what I, so, um, I, I guess what I'm, my only response to that is that she, she feels that that gives her the most flexibility and the best opportunity to, A, raise a family, and care for, in the future, care for her mother. And, um, that's, you know, a personal thing that I didn't get too into, that's what I was instructed to do, and that's what I believe I did in the, um, as far as the design intent with respect to the bylaw.
Right, and I understand that, and I appreciate that with the design intent and the bylaw. I was just trying to figure out her, if you knew her reasoning of a detached unit versus a unit that was attached, but still completely separate.
My understanding is, is flexibility is important, because as I said, she, she will, she does intend to rent the accessory dwelling until such time that your parents need to move in. And, um, so that speaks, in my mind, that speaks to flexibility, and then the recent experience of children with her parents in the same house, just, I think, is an overwhelming, um, experience for a lot of, single mothers.
Exactly. Which is a.
I mean, since you brought up young children, can I ask the age of the children?
Can?
Can that be appropriate? I thought they were teenagers, that's why. And then I was the one, uh, we received the letter, so I won't acknowledge that since it was referenced. I actually called Mr. Townsend, we, we talked, and we really thought that we'd already seen the plans a lot, we'd all been down to the office, thank you very much, multiple times. And we actually had talked to the applicant already and heard two versions of what she was gonna use the property for. So we really didn't think it was anything to be gained, and we don't really have an issue with sand castings at all, so that, that really wasn't the issue. And that's why we deferred the meeting, uh, did hold the meeting.
Questions, comments from the board?
Nope.
Well, I'm gonna go back to what Richard said, um, you know, it seems to me that you could've investigated a little more, something that would've butted those two units together. With a party wall, um, as, as sturdy a party wall, as soundproof a party wall, as fireproof a party wall, as you would have perhaps in a duplex or a townhouse situation. Certainly uses up a lot less site, the setbacks from the property lines are substantially greater. I, I would think that'd be something that the neighbors who are here tonight would, uh, respond to more positively. And, uh, I can see the, I can certainly see the reasoning for that. I don't think it compromises the utility of either the existing building or the new construction with a few minor changes to the plan. I've got a feeling it could work just as well as it does as a separate, a totally separate dwelling. Be a little, uh, cheaper to heat, you don't have as, as much exterior wall, maybe even a little cheaper to build. You don't have to build as much new exterior wall, but that's, that's gonna be incrementally minor. Still, it's, it's, it seems like a reasonable idea to me to look at it, that, look at that possibility.
Richard?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the same comment, it, I mean, I feel like the neighbors are being very reasonable and saying, you know, absolut, they're not saying no, they're saying we wanna work with you. And that working is potentially, could be what Bob was proposing, uh, that it's, you know, an addition. And personally, I don't under, I still don't understand the reasoning, uh, between having a, a separate unit and one that's attached. Because, you know, we've all lived in apartments and condos, and, you know, I lived in a condo for years and never heard the people next door to me. So I think that it certainly could be done very well where you're not hearing noise, or the children wouldn't be affected. Um, so that, I'm not quite convinced, I don't quite understand, I guess, where she's coming from, and understanding that why she wants this completely separate, uh, accessory dwelling as a separate structure as opposed to being, you know, uh, an attachment onto the existing house. And I think, like I said, the neighbors are very willing to, to work with you as a compromise, so that's kind of where I'm thinking about.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You know, my main concern, I think, is the, the density with the area, um, you know, to me, clearly this doesn't appear subordinate to the other house, like, you know, I know there was an effort made to turn it and things like that, but it's virtually the same footprint, and it really looks like another house on another lot, so from that's, that standpoint, I don't think it meets the intention of. So from that standpoint, I don't think it meets the intent or the requirements of the condition. You know, there is a precedent here, I guess. There are a number of 10,000 square foot lots in the area. I'm concerned about that. I mean, that was put in place to prevent future 5,000 square foot lots. But at the same time, I think we have to be sensitive that if someone has a 5,000 square foot lot and there's a real need for an accessory dwelling, I don't think we want to foreclose that opportunity for everybody. But I think if you're going to do that, you have to demonstrate a pretty strong need for it and, you know, clearly, you know, hit on every one of these in a big way. So, you know, there are some more concerns about, you know, densifying the neighborhood and traffic concerns and adding more, whether it's rental or ownership, just it's pretty tightly constrained now. So I think there is a real traffic safety concern, all of that, noise concern. I don't want to say I wouldn't support any application if you redid the design somehow or something along the lines of what Bob was talking about, because, you know, some other people may come back to us in the future and have a real need for that, so... But I'm not supportive of the application the way it is now. I don't think it meets the spirit or the intent or the requirements of the special permit.
Robert? No, I'm, you know, basically said what I wanted to say. I think it needs some further investigation. I think there are other ways to do this that aren't as invasive.
I can't support this. The word that keeps screaming in the back of my mind is disingenuous.
Can't spell it, but it... Yeah, let me chip on. I find myself in the same dilemma that I think that the rest of the board has. And I think Dan very eloquently described at least my concerns. One is, is I don't think it's subordinate. I don't think it fits. Density is an issue. I get very concerned about the timeframe. In the near term, we're going to do this, and then in the long term, or in the next term, we're going to do that. That concerns me. And somewhere, I've got the same issue that Richard has. It seems counterintuitive to me that I would have, if I had children that need to be watched and I had a parent or parents that needed to be watched, it would seem to me that I'd want them as close as I could in the same structure rather than having them separated on it. But that's, from my standpoint, that's just intuitive or just my thinking on it. And the way the application is now, I clearly can't support it. So I think at that point, we can do one of two things, I guess, because you need four votes to get your, get the special permit with conditions. I don't sense that you have the four votes here on the board. What we can do is, I could give you the opportunity to withdraw the application, or we can come back and formally vote the application. So I'll give you the opportunity to withdraw the application if that's what you'd like to do.
And if my client is receptive to an attached accessory dwelling, then you'd be a new application?
Then it would be a new application.
Like obviously, I would throw...
Let me just check with Laura. Those are the two alternative paths that we've got.
Yeah. I think we have to withdraw the application.
So we've got a request from the applicant to withdraw the application. Do I have a motion to accept that withdrawal?
I have some moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you just scribble out a little note, you know, to maybe... This is to request that you would take the application.
But I think you're spot on. You can back up with the L to separate the two over.
Oh, yeah. You could put even a green line between them, and that would be the entrance to the new unit. So there's lots of good things.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the... Are you here for the Form A plan?
Yeah, I'll keep the Form A or the plan out. I can go in there.
Yeah, well, as long as they're still cool, bring them in. We don't want them hot and angry.
The temperature here is quite nice.
Cutting back. We've got rid of the easel. We put a chair. We're cutting back on the budget. We took down the easel and we put up a chair.
Flexible furnishes.
There is an easel right there for this. There is one where they're going to use that. Right, the rear.
Sorry you got caught in the rain with that plan.
Actually, I spent a real time in my basement, so...
It's happened to me too many times. I recognize it.
You know, I think that's the first time in my whole time on the board we've ever declined anything.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, introduce yourself, sir, and tell us what you're looking to do.
When we're getting sued.
Okay. We're going to go on a couple weeks ago, you know, in the process, we got actually the plan signed. But basically, we did modifications, I believe. Is that the plan that I have marked up with modifications? There is one that's marked up. I can tell you what changes we made. Anyways. There's these lots that, my name is Jeff Hall, I represent the stands. They just want to reconfigure the lot lines of the two existing lots. These are their two existing lots. Set from that 22 Black Pen 2 and 3A. And a bit of my D is...
Okay.
So basically, this is going to be the proposed Lot 3, proposed Lot 4. This is, the plan's been submitted to Land Corps for their pre-file review, which they've gone through and incorporated some modifications that they wanted. One of which was to, this is Lot 4. They wanted me to label the dimensions on the easement for Lot 3 across Lot 4. Really, there wasn't really anything else substantial that they wanted me to change. I, some other modifications I did were to add these proposed found locations here and here.
Street number?
What's that?
Street number?
Oh, street number, yes. This is 125 Man Hill Roads is what proposed Lot 3 is going to be, 370 Hadley. It's all, or this Lot 4, proposed Lot 4.
Those numbers, that number actually given to you through the Land Corps? Did you get that from Land Corps?
Oh, oh, the street addresses, yes. Street addresses, right, from DPW. And, yeah, the lot numbers are next available, lot numbers for K is 514D, which is what this is. Yeah, the changes that we made were really just edits. I mean, like I said, and I did submit a plan that was marked up with all the changes.
We have it.
The configuration, the configurations didn't change. And the lots were designed to Residence A2 specifications, which is what they have redesigned. Even though this one is not in, it's actually in A3, but it goes 125 feet into District A2. This is only mine. So it had to be designed to Residence A2 specifications.
Questions from the public?
Yes, my name is Don Abel, and I'm here on behalf of the letter, the Sullivan's. And I do have a couple of questions and concerns I'd like to bring to the, just from the board. One is the so-called rat tail east of the lot. Could I approach the board?
Sure.
This lot here on that, so we're at Lot 3, I guess it's identified. And I just wanted to ask the board whether that configuration of the lot conforms with our zoning. I, if I may just finish my question.
Yeah.
So one aspect of my question is whether or not that, you know, the configuration of the lot, obviously it's an unusual configuration. And I understand, so whether or not that configuration is in compliance with Sichwood zoning. And secondly, my understanding, the reason for that is to provide access to the sewer on Hadley Road to Lot 3. And that, whether or not that's allowable to access sewer from the street for a lot that doesn't have legal frontage on the road where the sewer is accessible, because the access, my understanding is the legal access is on Man Hill Road and not Hadley Road. So that's, those are like two questions about that. And the third point about this piece of the lot is, it's not shown on this plan, but right where, what is identified on the plan is a concrete wall, which basically cuts right through the, that leg, if you will. Just east of that concrete wall is the septic system for this lot, for the Sullivan's. And I don't know whether that's been brought to the board's attention, but... So those are three things with regard to that particular aspect of the lot that I'd just like to bring to the board's attention and inquire as to its conformity with local zoning.
Can I address some of those issues?
Sure.
One of the first things I did was get basically a thumbs up from Neil Duggan at Zoneit that this configuration would be allowed. The reason, the reason we had to have frontage, we had to have, I also talked to Bob, the guy...
The seller?
Yes. And he had told me, they had some meeting back in the fall. He said, in order for you to hook up, and this off the post, you know, so really it doesn't affect the subdivision. But to answer the questions, just, you know, to show that what we're doing isn't a waste of time. Bob Rowland had a meeting with other people when they decided that in order to hook up to a utility in a road, you have to have frontage on that road. So that's why that's there. And that's why the utility easement is there as well to just give them more space to work there. Yes, Sullivan's septic tank is here, but they also have a sewer hookup, so, yeah, there's septic. I believe it's, I don't know what it is. I mean, it was clearly a septic, but I never pulled it.
Is the easement on?
They have a sewer hookup, so I don't know why, are they intending to use the sewer hookup? Or what are they intending to do?
Is the easement on the Sullivan's property or the property, the other property?
No, it's on Lot 4.
And who owns Lot 4?
We're not on Sullivan's property at all. There, what he was saying is...
You don't have to actually excavate that rat tail. You're going to be excavating in the easement on the Orange Lot, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah, right. They're not going to be going hot to the Sullivan's property.
Or even in that little sliver that you've provided for frontage. There may be a little...
But that's only like three feet or something.
You're not depending on that.
Right. Right, that's why they've got 15 feet to run utilities in the easement there. Trying to think what the other, what was the other issue?
There's no requirement for minimum frontage, right? There's no minimum frontage.
Well, they have frontage on Man Hill Road.
No, no, understood. But I meant for the, to hook up to the sewer. There's no minimum dimension for that.
Actually, the stands have been pursuing this. I was, and then they've been talking to people more recently than I, this week. But that's why I showed, and I understand that's why they want 13 copies of the plan as well, so the water and sewer people can review the plan. That's why I showed the sewer and water that's across the street and the services for proposed Lot 4, so that you can see that, you know, it's clear. There's clear access. There's no other utilities, you know, there's no utilities in the lot across the street such that they'd be competing for space on the sewer or water, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, on the tie-ins.
Right.
The reality is, what we're doing is just changing a lot on.
Right, 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 right.
We're not saying that that's adequate for the sewer, or the sewer would be connected, or that they could get sewer, sewer off Hadley versus the frontage.
We're not giving them...
And also to address your issue about zoning, that's why I added this note here that says, "Land Board endorsement..." "Land Board endorsement of this plan indicates only that the plant is not a subdivision on an MGL chapter 41, section 31L, and does not indicate that the lots are available or that they meet zoning, health, conservation, and general bylaw requirements." So...
If it's approved, it'll be so stamped.
If anybody, if anybody on the board is worried, that's why I put that note there, because it was also suggested in the subdivision, the A and R regulations, that a note like that might be required, so I just put it on there.
Yeah, you'll also, to the extent it gets approved, it'll be signed and stamped by this board to the same effect.
It was signed, actually.
It almost, I signed it. Hey, any other questions in the board? Motion from the board?
I have, I have one or two more, if I may. Just a couple of points on what was just discussed. If the sewer pipe is going to be built in the easement rather than the, as opposed to the rat tail, then the sewer wouldn't be accessible by frontage. It would be accessible by virtue of the easement. Which brings to, to me anyway, the question of whether or not that is proper. And the other issue is whether or not, you know, there is a rule, I looked for it, I couldn't find it. Apparently, there is a one about requiring frontage on the road where sewer is. I mean, frontage, the definition of frontage is its only definition of frontage. And in Sichwood, it's, at least in this zone, it's all free.
Well, it's got frontage on Man Hill Road.
Yeah, but let me answer the question. I think both, those are valid points once construction starts, or when you get your permit to do the construction. What this board is being asked to do is basically draw those lot lines that shows that rat tail and the two property boundaries.
Understood.
That's the extent of what this board is being asked to do and what the extent of what this board can do.
Yeah, and so, so really, you're saying the only really valid question that should be presented here is whether the size and configuration of that lot is...
Does it meet the requirements for an A and R?
Right. And is, given the unusual configuration, does that, does that meet the requirements?
There are probably more rat tails in this town than you could ever shake a stick at.
There's going to be a lot more?
No, there are.
There could be a lot more, given the definition of frontage, that it's not, there's no minimum frontage.
Yeah, well, as I say, that's not a definition that we provided. But in terms of rat tails, there's a tremendous number of rat tails, because we've got a fair number of subdivisions that have shared septic systems.
It appears to me there'll be more if sewer connection is allowed through these kinds of rat tails. It appears to me there'll be more if sewer connection is allowed through these kinds of rat tails.
Well, the, the main has a certain capacity anyway, so-
Yeah, well, that's, that's a different subject, but I think we're, we're-
One more issue, and I, and then I'll, I'll be done. Um, with regard to, uh, practical access to the lot, if I could approach the board again and just point it out. Practical access to utilities is what we're talking about here. But in terms of practical access to the buildable part of, of the lot is from Man Hill Road. And, um, the, uh, the actual, the ability to, uh, install a driveway will be limited by the, the theme of floodplain and wetlands line, and, um, and the fifty-foot no build setback to that, which leaves a pretty narrow area where a driveway can be built where vehicle traffic comes in.
It's twenty feet.
Uh, excuse me. And, uh, the slope of Man Hill Road is quite steep, the contours are shown on the plan. So my question is whether or not there's gonna be adequate, you know, functional access to the lot, given the, the, uh, extreme slope of this, of Man Hill Road, turning into just a very small available area for, for Lot three.
I think when you apply for building permit or you go to Concom, then I think that's, that would be the appropriate place to address those concerns.
Well, the reason I brought it up now, Chairman, is because, um, I'm bringing it up under the context of adequate access to the lot, which I think is part of the planning board's purview.
It is, under the A and R. Remember, we had the one before that had frontage on a street that they didn't have an easement to, so it is, they have to show that they've got the appropriate frontage, lot size, and then the, um, access. But when I look at it, it looks like there is the fifty-foot no build area, but then there's, I don't know how much, you know, forty feet or so between, it'd be sort of up to, I think, Concom to decide what they wanted to grant them, so I mean, when I look at it-
Yeah, there is a window, I, I think.
Yeah.
But, but I guess my point is that, I mean, the road is pretty steep, I'm sure you folks are familiar with it. And in order to get adequate access in such a steep angle, you'd probably have to build a, uh, a, uh, what's the proper word?
Retaining wall or something.
Probably a retaining wall.
They, they would, but I think for purposes of the A and R, it's just, you know, do they have access? It's a pretty low standard. Um, we had one before where someone had frontage on a street that they claimed that gave them access, and then we looked into it and they didn't have access rights, it was a private street. So, so technically they had no legal access, so we had to have them go back and get an easement, so it's, but in terms of access, I mean-
It is a public way.
Yeah, they've got frontage on a public way, yes, there're gonna be some hurdles for them to go through to get that, but I, I don't think it rises to the level of saying they don't have adequate access. And it, you know, I think a lot of stuff you're talking about's gonna be down the road as they go for building permit. I do have a question for Laura to follow up, though, on the, um, the accessing sewer, is that just a DPW regulation? I mean, where does that pop up in terms of you can access sewer if you have frontage on the road?
There is-
Is it a policy of DPW or?
I'm not sure whose policy it is, I've, I've heard that statement. I've heard it from DPW personnel, so I understand it's something they're using, I'm not sure what type of-
Yeah, 'cause I, I just was curious about that, 'cause it doesn't appear in zoning or anywhere else, kind of outside of our jurisdiction, I think, but-
It's definitely way outside.
But I'm just curious, because I am concerned about, you know, the rat tailing in, 'cause I could envision someone doing something like that and building a giant forty B project, you know, off the road where that wasn't the intent. So I'm just, it, it's not applicable for what we're talking about now, but I am concerned about that as well from sort of a policy standpoint, and it probably shouldn't be done this way.
Just, uh, just a comment that some towns do have lot shape factors and that type of regulation, and Situate just doesn't have any of that.
We talked about that one time, I remember, and we didn't get anywhere with it for some reason. Yeah, we had that lot shape factor, and, um, okay, that's all I have.
You all set? Okay, motion from the board?
I think we have a motion. Um, I move to endorse as approved, as approval under the subdivision control law not required, a plan of land being subdivision of Lot two, Plan fifty-one forty dash D, three seventy Hathley Road, one twenty-five Man Hill Road, Situate, Mass., prepared by J. Lowell Associates for applicant L. Jeff Lowell and owner Joseph R. Stanton, trustee. The Stanton Family Nom- Nominee Trust, revised date eight to twelve.
Do I have a second for that next motion?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will sign those after the meeting, if we all hold them on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not sure where we are. Next item, zoning.
This is the-
Before we do that, let's, no, 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 you're doing fine. Let's just step back and, and, and talk why we're doing them, and then we can talk about where we are, what we've done. Where we are, what we've done, it's you. Just, just so you've gotten that.
Also, I thought you were gonna do that.
No, no. I explained that where we are is all what you've done.
Bill doesn't get paid enough to do that, right?
Okay, um, the DEP has to approve a water withdrawal permit for Situate, which gives us a certain number of gallons that we withdraw from here as a town. And we're looking at, um, we're, we're gonna be trying to expand that slightly, or at least maintain it. And one of the conditions of maintaining that water withdrawal permit is that we fix our zoning so that we're really protecting the land which contributes to the groundwater and also to the surface water areas in a way that the state is, is really happy with, that they feel meets the, um, code of Massachusetts regulations and other, um, state laws. So, DPW, when they got this letter, asked me to work on some zoning, and I've been working closely with Jim DeBarros, who's the, uh, Water Division Supervisor, who some of you may know, um, and also with DEP personnel, and with Neil Duggan, the Building Commissioner, and, um, of course, you know, with all of you. Um, so we have some drafts that, at this point, I think, are in pretty good shape to go forward. What has to happen in terms of this meeting is that the Planning Board needs to vote to submit these articles to the board's selectmen, and that starts the process to get them onto the town meeting warrant. There's gonna be a town meeting either the end of October or the beginning of November. It really has not been set yet. It won't be the same day as the presidential election, that's about all we know, but we don't know exactly what day it's gonna be. Um, that all should come clear in the next couple of weeks. But in the meantime, um, to comply with that permit, we wanna get that zoning, you know, sort of started into the pipeline. The other zoning change that we have been talking about has to do with the village business overlay district, and the fact that if you're going to use it, right now, you have to have dimensional, um, um, dimensions for your lot that meet the standards of the bylaw with just a couple of exceptions. And that's come into, um, into play where you've been looking at a proposal on a lot where the frontage doesn't meet zoning. And, um, to address that, um, I've been working with the owner of that lot to a certain extent, but also trying to think about the greater good and what's really, you know, good for the Planning Board and its, you know, ability to control what happens, and good for the town, and so on. So there's a change in that language that's being proposed that would make it so you can waive that frontage if, you know, if you want to. Um, it doesn't add anything extra for the applicant to have to do, but there's quite a bit, if you really look at the bylaw, that they're supposed to do already. They're supposed to provide public benefits and so on. Um, so that's the second zoning change. And that's, that's what we have, but I thought I would spend a minute or two just distributing some maps, um, I guess letting the public know that, that maps are available of the change in this area that's being proposed, um, you know, the area that's regulated for the water protection. And just going through really quickly what the changes are to the zoning that deals with that water protection and distributing the changes to you all, so you can see them. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Okay, so with the, um, Water Resource Protection District, the first map I'm gonna hand out has the existing district.
Did you send out the changes, that's the latest?
I've got the latest here.
It's not the latest?
No, it really, you know, even today, I was getting more feedback from DEP about the things I had changed, and so-
There's a newer one.
So there's a newer one.
So this, but this is existing, what we're working off of now, as, as a comparison.
What we're working off of now, and if you look at, um, if you look at the blue line, that's the outline of the Water Resource Protection District, you see these little, um, tongue-type shapes that are the, the surface water zones around the tributaries to the surface water supply. Um, I think there's one on the, perhaps to the right around Stockbridge Road, I think that's the Tampa. Um, then there's one that comes up through, um, through the Sullivan State's property on, onto Allen Street. And then in the west end, there's one that comes off of Black Road, um, kind of where that, that would be the land was, um, was in, oh, yeah.
That huge swamp is out there.
Yeah, huge swamp is, is half of Black Road. So, the rat change would-
It's the beginning of your bound book, back up there.
Yep. That it is.
The, um, the rat change, which I think is the first of these changes that should happen in the Water Resource District, it would just extend that little blue line, so these little, um, shapes that represent the, um, surface water protection district are now included in the Water Resource Protection District. So, it's a really common sense change. I don't think it's gonna be controversial, but-
I understand the difference. Do you see where these gray things are? Like, this is like a little piece that sticks out. Now she's taking this and going around it. Okay.
The nose to get.
Right, and nothing, nothing else has changed.
Yeah, it's like those pictures, we have to see what the difference is.
Yeah. I don't like too.
You're faster than me.
Do we have to vote to recommend it to the selectman?
Yeah, or just to say that you want it somewhere on the continent, that's your call. But that's, um-
Should we handle that, or just get a motion to move that right out of the way?
Can I, can I ask you a question real quick first? The, um, so the, the dark gray areas, that's really wet areas, pretty much, right? That's where the creeks are and the surface water supply areas.
Well, there's a creek in the center of that, but I think it's maybe wet, but just in the center.
I guess my question is, you know, like, we're, we're capturing the gray area by going out there, but it seems to me like it would be a little bigger zone around that, you know, like most of the areas where we've got the gray area with the, um, Water Resource Protection District, we typically catch an area a little bit wider than that. I'm concerned about the narrowness of, you know, just, it's probably just the minimum to meet the requirements, right, for the state and-
That's, well, this, and you'll see there's a lot of area on this map that's, that's not in the green, and it's not in the gray, and that's, that's other contributing area that, um, twenty years ago, the consultants who worked on this zoning just, you know, kind of roughly developed a zoning district, and they thought, well, you know, based on the topography, probably all this area contributes in some way.
Yeah.
That's sort of the watershed of those, of those trivia areas.
Yeah. I, I tend to think, I mean, some of the watershed, I tend to think might be a little bit much, but I do look at the areas that clearly are more of the wet areas, and we're defining it so tightly in those areas, but we need like another consultant to look at it, I guess, but-
You look at the scale, um, what is this here, uh, is that-
Seven hundred and fifty feet.
So it could be like easily a hundred feet across here, probably more. And, and it's probably, it's, it's not like a huge river.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, it's small.
So tell me this, so the state said basically, we had to have our surface water supply all within? I mean, what did it say, that's what it said, you have to include it in your Water Resource Protection District, all surface water supply? And we realize someone's outside of it, and so we're just capturing that, and then we meet the state requirement? Okay. Okay. Okay, yeah, I'm fine with it.
So, you wanna vote, vote the map?
Yeah, we better see those, I think, right? Good all at once. Nice, nice.
There's no water in them.
Yeah, came out nice.
City of Homer?
City of Homer.
And they're only a few days apart.
Are they?
August second, August seventh.
That rule in public.
So there's a couple of different themes to this, because buried in the bylaw are different references to the district that have to be updated since we're changing the map. So that's why there are actually four little sections here. Um, the main one is, is the first one, deals with the regulations in the Water Resource Protection District. And, um, DEP wanted the findings of this session to call out, you know, the contribution to the wells. Um, those really weren't, um, it wasn't explained that that was supposed to be part of this district. You know, it was part of the district. Um, they wanted a language to explain that, and so, uh, which one would understand better, but it's really poor. Um, we, um, there are a couple of changes where, um, the previous version had a special comment process, a variance process. Um, they talked about how twenty-five feet of, of lot that was in the district could be considered not in the district. DEP, et cetera. So those things are gonna be, um, as far as the use regulations, there were a whole bunch of- okay, it looks like mine has like two, two first pages here, so if we got one of the two first pages, um, we were having trouble talking about them. So on the third, on mine is the third actual page that starts, um, you know, the second, third page starts filling out these uses. Most of the uses in the old bylaw are in the new one, but there are some that, that aren't anymore. And these are things that DEP is just not requiring the town to regulate anymore, and, um, so they're gonna be taken out. Things like, um, a hotel or motel, um, a photographic processing establishment, um, I believe somewhere in here, et cetera. There's a, um, dry cleaner, um-
Yeah, I see that.
Airplane.
Yeah, we can still do airplanes, we can't do cars or boats.
Self-service laundries?
Yes, self-service laundry, oh, all of those types of things.
How about my home-built airplane?
I think one of the reasons is that the technology for dealing with the environmental impact of those things is so much better now that they, they just don't have to completely prohibit them anymore. Instead of prohibiting a whole use like, like a hotel, they're, they're prohibiting where the septic system is located. They don't want the septic system to zone in. They don't want, um, hazardous materials stored, accepted or stored on a, um, a concrete floor. Um, so the actual activities that are the problem are being regulated instead of what the land uses.
So does this track specific language from DEP?
Yeah.
Okay, so we didn't make any of this up?
No.
It's good.
No, it was totally uncreated.
Oh, it's the only way to, only way to fly.
Sometimes that's-
So, so now you can have grazing livestock and domestic animals within a hundred feet of- So, so now you can have grazing livestock and domestic animals within a hundred feet of Old Oak and Bucket Road?
Well, I mean, it's not specifically prohibited, but there are prohibitions on how you handle them more.
Right.
So they're looking at, you know, what's the, you know, what's the most, um, significant thing about this and trying to regulate that. I mean, if people want to keep that prohibition on livestock, I mean, certainly that's, you know, that's something you can do.
I, I was just commenting, never mind, I mean.
You might know someone that wants like to have an alpaca farm.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is one up on Grove Street, and some folks that have. Llamas. Yes, and llamas up there. Yeah.
So, um.
I mean, this, this does give me a little bit of concern, you know, I guess I haven't studied it enough, but.
But it was stuff that was already there, really, I mean, you see that everything.
Well, we had a special permit process before for some of them, and now it's been eliminated, so now it's just either allowed or not allowed.
I did exchange some correspondence with DEP on that because I know that's something that, that, um, you know, could affect. They were very clear that they don't want the fish.
Who, DEP was?
I'm surprised at this, they're striking swimming, wading, or bathing in Old Oak and Bucket Pond Road? I would think that would still be prohibited.
Well, if it's prohibited, that's the water department's, you know, regulation, it's their authority that it would be prohibited.
Oh, not, I see.
It's an enforcement issue, it's the enforcement law.
Right.
Well, I, I for one would like to study this a little bit more, because it's, I didn't realize the scope of the changes. I am always fear the unintended consequences, you know, and I know we've done stuff like this before, and then all of a sudden a giant house pops up that we didn't expect, and things like that. So I, I mean, if we're changing the uses, all of a sudden, obviously, there appear to be allowing someone's, some that weren't allowed before there without a special permit.
How, how much, how much latitude do we have to massage these kinds of things if, as Dan's saying, you know, they, they, they raise unintended consequences that maybe the state didn't consider when they began to dictate these terms and conditions to us?
Well, these are mostly DEP changes, right, is my understanding, so.
Yeah, I think I can answer your question, and the answer is, you can add in things, but.
You can't take anything out. Or, or modify the language, they're not gonna let you do it.
Like, like one word changes from what they had, they said, no, just use our language.
And, and this is the, the Department of, uh, Environmental Protection is, is the one pushing this from the state.
Yeah, the ones who give us our, you know, control over the drying water from the wells.
So you're talking probably primarily about the prohibited uses where it gets into very specific environmental language that I'm seeing, I'm guessing that came from the state?
The whole thing came from the state.
But, but not, not like deleting, you know.
Well, I mean.
Stabling, hitching, standing, feeding, grazing, right?
Yeah, if you wanna add those in, I'm sure there isn't any problem with that, but, um.
But you're saying the, um, the other language, that, the added language or what you have in there, this is the state.
Yeah.
Pushing this, and.
But, but.
But we could add other things in and do it by special per, I mean, we could, Eric, can I answer your question? This is a town zoning change, so, you know, the process, like anything, works. We say we recommend or we don't recommend it, the selectmen say they recommend or don't recommend it, goes to town meeting.
No, I, I, I understand that, but, you know, I, I'm also hearing that the, the language is being dictated from on high, and if we, if we were to make changes, then the response would be, you're tough, tough out of luck if you want any water out of the wells this year.
Well, I think we can be more restrictive, we can't be less restrictive.
No, I, I understand that too.
Kind of like wetlands, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think in some ways, some of the special permits that you may be thinking about, I mean, for instance, for stabling animals, that might make sense. But you have to go back to the, the other restrictions in here, and, and couldn't be more liberal than.
Right.
I mean, for instance, you have to store more inserts.
Yeah, you still have to meet the other.
There, there is, there is some special permit language here under paragraph thirty-four, uh, for.
I mean, I.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I think.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's a mistake, yeah.
Is that a mistake?
Yeah, that's a mistake.
I mean, my understanding before this was that you define the Water Resource Protection District, and for the most part, you could only do certain prohibited uses if you got a special permit from the planning board, basically. There were a number of listed uses, and you'd have to come to us, and our job was to make sure the appropriate protections were in place so it didn't damage the Water Resource Protection District, and, you know, they came up with a whole list of things that we were concerned about, from dry cleaning to cemeteries to whatever it is. Um, and now it appears that they've replaced that just for a system where here's a list of things you can't do. And I understand that, the state's saying you just can't have these in your Water Resource Protection, like something that generates a certain amount of hazardous materials and things like that.
Right.
But what we've lost by this is if we want any control above and beyond sort of the bare minimum state standard of, you know, we're still concerned about that. Uh, my impression from hearing about this Water Resource Protection District, the way it's worked in the past, is that I think most people think it was too restrictive in the past. And a lot of it, a lot of it happens right in the, um, you know, the area down by the Rotary and the, um, the Green Bush area.
Yeah.
So I've heard that from several people that, you know, because of this process, it's hard to fit a lot of businesses in that area because of the process we had before, so this could be better, but.
Well, I mean, for the, taking out the hotel motel provision, um, and I think some people see that having it too far off, well, there's no point in having a hotel or a district.
Yeah.
But, but they're not really, really understanding of what DEP or the town didn't really understand. A hotel motel hotel with a, with a wastewater plant or, um, you know, they're having a private package plant or something that's where that's located. Um, you know, there's a way to connect it to sewer, then that's not a big problem, um. Um, I, I mean, I think the, the special permit that you left there allowed secondary usage or storage of toxic or hazardous material in quantities greater than normally associated with household use. Well, what DEP is saying now is they don't want to allow any hazardous materials for their household use. Um, except if they spill out the, the conditions under which, you know, that could be allowed. So it, it does, it's just a completely different approach from what was there before, and I understand it's, you know, it's, it's a change.
I guess my concern is like, just glancing out without having read it real detailed is, you know, the prohibition on like storage of liquid hazardous materials, liquid propane, liquid petroleum products unless incidental to normal household use, outdoor maintenance, heating. Immediately look at that and think, well, could the paint store have gone there, you know, with, under this regulation?
Yeah.
It appears that it probably couldn't, and I'm not sure that's what we want for a thriving business district down there. Now, if the state's mandating this, if this came straight out of the state, which I'd wanna verify, um, it calls into question, you know, do we need to have a much narrower district boundaries because that, some of this could potentially kill a lot of opportunities in Green Bush, for example. So that's what's giving me some pause here, I mean, I know, I don't disagree, we've gotta meet the state, because we need our water, we're not gonna get denied our use withdrawal permit, but you, you know, if we pass this now, is that gonna kill a lot of development in those areas inadvertently? Versus like redrawing the boundaries at the same time to maybe make it narrower if we can, or something like that. But yeah, that, that number three there, you know, it's basically household storage of materials, so you have a hardware store, you probably couldn't have one.
Well, again, the area that they're really concerned with is how they are the green and the gray. The blue is all, is all, um, stretched.
Right.
On the other hand, and there're gonna be some political, um, aspects to this, as there are with everything.
Exactly.
And, um, um, I, I did find out that, um, it, it may be possible for the town to get an extension on the water withdrawal permit if this isn't, you know, if this isn't passed at the town. But, you know, I, I wanna have some real, um, feeling that we're, we're serious about getting this done before asking for it, and if we have,
Yeah.
you know, a really strong reason for it.
What, what's our, um, what's our time where we're not, it's a pretty tight process, I know, but.
Yeah, it's a very tight process, um, I have a.
I, I mean, I, my guess is that there's gonna be a lot of discussion about this at town meeting from the commercial interests.
Yeah, well, there's that, that big service master franchise down there in Green Bush, and then there's the, the concrete, um, fabricating company there, and I, I don't know how much of this is, you know, gonna involve the stuff that they store.
But it actually sounds like, from what I understand, that this is less restrictive than what it used to be.
In some ways, it's more restrictive.
Because of these additional items here?
Yeah, in some ways, it's less restrictive because like, like you said, you know, grazing and stuff, you know, you had to get a special permit, they limited that, but then if you look at the.
These are all new at the end.
Look at the added stuff, um, and this doesn't allow it by special permit, it's just a clear prohibition, but, you know, the one that caught my eye right away is at number three, you know, in the middle of all the stuff, that storage of liquid hazardous materials, liquid propane, liquid petroleum, unless storage is incidental to normal household use, outdoor maintenance or heating of a structure. So I think about, you know, like, the propane that they sell at the village market.
Yeah. Right.
You probably couldn't have a use like that in Green Bush under this.
Or they had one down at the paint store, when.
Yeah, they had, or you couldn't have the paint store again, and I think, I don't know if you remember, we had the, one gentleman that came in that was talking about his, um, auto.
Right.
Repair shop, and how there's nowhere he can locate in Situate, and.
That's marked, yeah, fiber fat.
I just think we wanna think that out, and if, you know, we obviously have to comply with what the state requires, because we need our water, and we're not gonna, there's no choice in that, but.
Yeah, and, and aren't there, uh, you know, like, uh, emergency generators that have bottled propane in large quantities stored right there next to them?
Probably, yeah.
But you know what?
I think they're not talking.
Emergency uses, I think. No, I, I, I'm talking about if there was like a commercial, uh, you know, um.
You know, huge driftway, right, right here.
Are they, are they natural gas?
So in fact, the paint store would have been about right here, it's not really in the district, unless it's like.
Cause I thought, I thought all of Green Bush, pretty much, well, not that part, but this part is right here.
It's in the blue.
The driftway, yeah.
No, here's the driftway.
Oh, I see what you're saying, right.
And so like the train station is like here, I don't know what this big parcel is here, but I mean, there's, this is like the golf course.
Yeah.
So then this whole area looks like Green Bush, unless right here by the, 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 um, Herring River is what they're referring to here.
Yeah, I see.
It looks to me like it's outside the area.
Two would work as though protected.
Right where the, the green, the gray, and the blue.
I was pretty sure it was, cause when he came in, he said that, you know, they were looking at that specific building, so maybe that's the line or something, I don't know.
Well, the Herring River is right there.
It is right there, yeah, so. Um, and, and I'm not sure I disagree with that, you wouldn't want that use there, it's just, I think there could be some unintended consequences here if we don't pay attention to it.
Yeah.
It just, I just hope to have a little bit more time to look at it, but I don't know if we have.
Well, we, we have a little more time, but not, you know, not.
Like our next meeting?
Like your next meeting.
Okay.
And what I would suggest to do, um, depending on what we have on that, let's see, can I general the record? Oh, go ahead, um, depending on the time that we have, is I have sent a draft to the, um, the chairman of the Water Resources Committee, um, who happens to work in the state, so he's pretty aware of some of these, you know, some of the state concerns. And we maybe invite some of those people in, and the water division, I mean, the water division people were supposed to be here tonight, so I'm, uh, disappointed that they're not here.
Yeah.
Um, because this is very, very important to them. I mean, for instance, we have situation, well, I mean, we have many situations in town that really do need control, that are not being handled the way that they should be, regardless of what the use is. So I think we need as a town to get more serious about the, the way that we do it, I think, last time.
Like, just looking at this, you know, the, the boundaries, here's three A, um, so pretty much, almost the entire length of three A is covered within the zone, right? From here to here, and under the one I'm reading here, that means you couldn't have.
A gas station up there on Man Hill.
A gas station, a grocery store, it really, uh.
Well, where would it say a, a grocery store, because of the.
Well, well, because, well, because you can't have liquid hazardous materials.
Okay, okay.
Other than household, so.
Would that be Coke?
It'd be, yeah. It'd be virtually anything, it'd be, you know, household cleaning stuff, anything that's not normal, how, I mean, well, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't fit, I know that.
What, what about the, uh, the, um, the, the commuter rail? I, I don't know, do we have any influence or control, but I don't know what they're storing there, and that would seem to me to be right down in the middle of this.
It's, well, it's outside the district.
I was gonna say, I think it looks outside.
Is it? Okay.
I think, um, I think the other thing that I could do is.
It gets down towards Green Bush, it's inside.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
You're right.
I mean.
What some of these terms mean, because sometimes, even when you read the CMR, it's difficult to understand exactly.
Yeah, but also, I, I just wonder if there might be a way to draw what's required by the state more narrowly while keeping what we have now for the other areas. You know, if you said they're concerned about the gray and the green.
Yeah.
I wonder if to comply with the state, we capture that, and.
You could certainly do that, that's why I'm talking about inviting in the Water Resource Committee, because I think you'll, you'll get into a good dialogue about it.
Cause it, you know, my concern, obviously, with economic development and things like that, is not foreclosing opportunities by over zealously zoning things.
Yeah.
So, this looks like a broad, broad brush stroke, I mean, clearly this will comply with the state, we just throw a line around the whole thing and we're compliant, but.
Yeah.
Because our, our main, if you look at Chief Justice Christian Highway, it runs right, right through that.
Mm-hmm.
Right, the main areas, the, the areas that you're required to regulate are the green, which is the wellhead protection districts, and the gray, which is the surface water supply. You're not required to regulate anything else. Situate has always regulated that other, you know, large area.
And, and I don't mind that, because we have special permit process for that, uh, under the current, right? So we regulate it, but we can still permit things. It's not a clear, and this is a clear prohibition, this says you can't do it, and there's no special permit process, so you just can't do it, that's been eliminated under this draft.
Sure, well, I think it'd be easy to, to do what I think you're saying, which is to keep the special permit process for the, the, the other parts of the district that aren't required to be regulated, but just regulate what you have to regulate.
That's what I'm concerned about, I mean, because that, that to me is an easy thing to explain at town meeting too, you know, this is, we're doing the bare minimum to comply with the state, everything else is staying the same. If we're not doing that, I just think it raises a lot of questions, and especially on this tight, type of a timeframe.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I just think it's gonna cause problems at town meeting and a lot of concerns, and.
What I still think maybe is, is a good thought is that the, the uses that they formally called out, like a plating establishment and uh, stabling horses, hotels, dry cleaning, I don't think those are the only ones that, that previously had these details.
Right.
But you could ask for any business going through site plan review to give you, you know, their MSDS sheets, and, you know, have other, um,
Yeah.
other, um, approaches to making sure that they're managing these things in an environmentally correct way.
Well, the way to, well, the way to do it would be to not even define it by the type of use, but just by what they store or generate, kinda like how the state's doing it. You don't, you don't say hotel or cemetery, you just say, if your business generates, you know, hazardous materials above normal household use, and you're in the water protection, then you have to get a special permit.
Yeah, or, or.
Then you capture everything you need to.
Yeah.
It's a little harder to draft.
With a site plan review or whatever, um, would be pumped up to a major site plan review.
Yeah, if you're within the water resource.
Within the Water Resource Protection District.
I'd be supportive of something more like that, you know, especially in a tight timeframe, just to say, you know, if, if you think that's a possibility, to just outline the gray and the green, put this into place for that, leave everything else alone for now, unless we have time to really vet it, and.
Well, um, okay, so, okay, well, that's, that's another possibility, is leave everything alone in the blue area.
Yeah.
Keep the old district, um, but on top of that, you'd have, you'd still have these, well, they do want, they, they do like the idea of this, um, overall district.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So, anyway, but, but we could outline the overall district a new way, but just regulate the green and the gray.
We get two different objectives, one is, is that we don't wanna preclude any, any development, economic development that could take place on there. And they're looking at prohibiting, prohibiting everything.
Well, I think there're gonna be places where, you know, maybe the economic interest in the state.
Understood.
So like I'm concerned.
If we went and, and covered the blue and the gray, no, the green and the gray. Right, and we made these changes, then, then, then in effect, that would leave the, the areas in the blue that belong, that would, would be regulated by the existing process.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, yeah, can do that, so, um.
And then the question becomes is, you get Clarkson and his crew, and who else do we need, and we need the town, go back up and see if they would concur with that.
Yeah.
And then maybe a second step is maybe take a look at the areas not in the gray and the. And then maybe a second step is maybe take a look at the areas not in the gray and the green as another, maybe in spring town meeting next year of like, doing what we talked about, kind of improve that a little bit.
Improve, create a lot better special permit process.
Yeah, or a little more defined, not by kind of the outdated hotel motel uses we think are going to create it and just make it work a little better, maybe.
Okay.
At what point does this have to get to the selectmen for...
Um, well, I think we could have one more meeting to, to discuss and, and review and take some action, but after that, it's, it's not going to the selectmen because...
Doesn't require a public hearing in, in front of us, but once it gets to the selectmen...
Unless it's this.
No, but it, no, this isn't a public hearing.
Oh, not here, wait.
No, um, once it gets to the selectmen, then they, they resubmit it back to the planning board.
Okay.
And then we hold the public vote.
Okay, okay.
And this is all going to happen by, you know, the end of October.
By soon, yeah.
Or it's, um...
And, um, at town meeting, I mean, would the, people actually have to review all this to approve the changes?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we have it as a handout, but people really like seeing everyone's, these changes.
Of course, I'm just asking.
Put it up on the town website beforehand so people have a chance to look at it.
We did that with the whole zoning bylaw revision, it was online and handouts, you know, and I think a limited amount of people actually looked at it.
Both, both people besides us that concerned themselves with zoning in town looked at it.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say, but I wasn't going to name names, but yes.
But both of them did, because I got a call from one of them.
Yes.
Good.
So where are we here?
Name dropper.
So I'm going to do a revision of this and I'm going to have to run it by DEP again and run it by John Clarkson and, um, I mean, I don't have to run it by him, I can just let him know that there was, um, you know, there was some ideas, some new ideas that came out of the planning board meeting about how to approach this the best way. And, um, you know, I think it would make sense to invite him and...
Is that a, we can meet with him, I don't know when, when his group meets?
I, I don't know either, um, yeah. They meet monthly, so that may not happen in the next two weeks.
Well, I mean, they, they should be flexible enough, they can meet more than once a month.
And we can send our, send our liaison, Bill, right? Send our liaison to meet and report back, right?
I wasn't sure what I was going to do that day, but, yeah.
Yeah. I, I think that...
It'd be easier to have you come here than to have to spend your time.
I, I think that route just makes a lot more sense on this kind of timeframe and just, you know, it seems kind of a complicated thing otherwise. We're doing the bare minimum, you know, we have to do this or we're not going to get our wa- water withdrawal. So it's going to be, okay.
The, the only thing that's going to be really confusing is that, you know, um, what goes on in this blue district isn't going to really make any sense anymore because we're, we're regulating what's happening in this blue district in, in a very sort of obsolete way. And what's going to go on in the green, the gray is going to make sense and be modern and so on and the, the blue is going to have to really be sort of separated.
Well, like, well, right now, the whole thing is all...
Does it take longer to study the blue and come up at the next year's town meeting with changes to that?
Yeah.
I think that's what Dan was saying.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense.
Then modernize the other part of it the next round and we've got a little more time to, to look at it.
It would be easier to do it that way, more efficient to do it that way than to come back up and try to undo what DEP has, has things to do for the, for green and gray.
Yeah, well, I can already tell you, undoing what they want to do is just not going to work.
Yeah, so the only chance you got is to control it is to not do it in the first place.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, good. So that's, um, that's running one on one and then round two. The changes to interrupt the, um, mixings. Which... So, um, the first idea, what did you... No, I'm just looking to, yeah. I don't know if we're going to do that.
Yeah, well, I think, I think we... Yeah, we'll just put it in there.
We can't do this.
Yeah, we can't, oh.
So this just gives us more flexibility than we already have anyway?
No, this, this makes it work.
Yeah.
What happens, what happens is we got caught with the requirement of maintaining the existing frontage requirements.
Mm-hmm.
And what this does is, because it allows us to come back up and change the underlying, it, it doesn't change the fronting, frontal requirements for the zone, but then what it does is for that application allows you to change the frontal fronting requirements. So in effect, it, it's under a special permit, so you, you basically still have control over it.
And it's only for mixed-use buildings?
It's only for the mixed-use buildings.
And is that only in the village overlay districts?
Yes.
What are you mentioning?
That's the only place you have mixed-use buildings.
Yep. And this is a village business overlay which covers all the business districts?
Yeah, I spent, Neil and I went back and forth talking about it and then we went through a couple of emails back and forth on it. And Neil is very comfortable with this language.
Would this be, uh, this is a vote, a specific, separate vote as opposed to a condition of a special permit?
Well, I was already asked if this would be a majority vote or, uh, a four-fifths vote and I don't think it really makes any lot of difference because you've got to take a four-fifths vote.
This could be a majority vote and then you'd have the four-fifths, assume a majority for the overall vote.
But I guess what I'm saying, instead of a special vote, would it simply be another condition of a special permit?
Yeah, does this only come up in a special, together with a special permit?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, it'll only come up with that?
Neil thought it was not possible to, for the planning board to entertain a mixed-use development if the frontage didn't have wanted it as any... And that's the way he's interpreting it.
No, I interpret it that way too. I'm just saying with this change though, this would only come up, someone couldn't just come to us and say, "We want you to waive the frontage requirement" without going through a full special permit process and hearing and all of that. That's what I'm concerned about. I think there should be a full hearing process.
They can already, they can actually do that on a Form A, but, um, but that's no, this isn't about it all. I mean, this is only about the village business overlay.
And everything that happens within those districts is subject to a special permit process.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, for mixed use.
So...
This would only apply for mixed use.
So is it a condition or not? I didn't quite hear the answer there. Is it a...
No, it's a separate vote that you would take.
It's a separate, why, why isn't it a condition? I'm just curious.
Um, I guess because it's, you know, it's a big enough deal that there's language, um, that's kind of restricted that says the construction has to meet the requirements of the underlying zoning district. So this just gives you a way to...
I mean, you could condition it if you want it, you could add this as a condition.
Mm-hmm.
But what this says is that right now, let's say in a business district, I think it's 60 feet, you have to have 60 feet, 60-foot frontage, right? This would allow you to come back up and take that 60-foot requirement, reduce it to 48, right? And, and you'd take a vote as to allow that frontage to be reduced from 60 to 48. So that would be one vote that the board would take. And then they would take that vote and build on that to come back up and either approve or disapprove of the special permit. If the special permit was approved, then that would require a supermajority.
Yeah, it just seems like they go hand, it seems like they go hand in hand, so. I would, I'm just curious why they've separated.
This just seemed, I mean, I, I guess you could say that the planning board, um, can, I, I mean, I'm not sure how you would work this out as a condition. You're just talking about an underlying aspect of the law.
Yeah, but I think...
Why you're doing it doesn't have the right frontage.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't know what, how you would, like, why you would think of it.
You could condition the special permit on a positive vote on this, on this issue.
Yeah, but I think what it does is it forces you to recognize the fact that you're reducing the frontage by making the vote.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, if everybody's happy with the language.
Okay, I mean, I guess...
There are not many businesses, you know, business lots that have 100-foot of frontage.
Right.
And that's what you're supposed to have, so that would really be...
So there's some other comments for mixed-use buildings?
No, no, I, I understand it. I just was curious about the, I guess, mechanics per se of it.
Okay, I mean, um...
No, just, I was just trying to understand, not that I'm for or against either one.
Okay.
I think it works, I mean, it just applies to mixed-use buildings and it says that we have to issue a special permit for a mixed-use building, so that's what was my concern.
Yeah.
So it'll only come up in a special permit process anyway, so...
Agreed.
Yeah, I think it's good.
I think it works.
Yep.
Okay, good.
So we need to vote on it? Oh, we can't vote until we have a public hearing?
We can vote on it, oh.
No, no, it's just a vote on submitting it to the selectmen, yeah, that'd be great.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move that we submit, uh, this proposed change to section 560.4, requirements for mixed-use buildings as drafted, to the selectmen for consideration.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Consideration for the town, fall town meeting. Yes, for consideration for a fall town meeting.
For a future town meeting.
The next town meeting, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Where are we? Counting minutes, town planner report, adjournment?
Yeah, I vote for the latter.
I think I've heard Bob would make his motion.
He's trying.
We're not here yet.
And are these all the same things?
Did you miss this while you were gone?
I did.
Oh, okay.
I was wondering what you guys were doing when I was gone, so actually.
Oh, we'll never know.
Yeah, I see that.
We've managed to undo both of them when she came back.
I see that, that 20-story high-rise go up on three L, I know something happened, right?
So I move that we approve $6.92 to WB Mason for office supplies and folders, file folders.
Uh, second.
Yeah, oh, you want to do it all?
Do them all.
Yeah, we do that, okay. Uh, also, I move $172 to pay $172.50 for, uh, to Chesia Consulting for peer review services. Uh, for Chesia Consulting, prepare estimates for planning board for the Walnut Tree Hill collection and for the performance bond. So those two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't have a pen, but I, oh, that's my stylus.
You've got a pen, you can use...
Um, maybe I can do a real quick, uh, planner report.
Sure.
Which is, um, the Housing Authority is redoing their parking lot, they're adding, and I didn't count them, but it looks like about 25 parking spaces and they're building some type of garage maintenance building in the, in the backyard of the, of Central Park. Um, it's an area where you have the Lawson Tower, you've got, you know, all sorts of...
The libraries there, yeah.
Street wall, uh, and so on. Um, so first of all, they, they didn't realize that they need a site plan review, but they are going to be coming in for a site plan review. And, um, secondly, talking to Neil about this, he was thinking that perhaps they really should go to the design review because of that location.
Absolutely.
It's kind of like a prime landscape.
Absolutely.
So, okay, good, good, um, good. And, um, hopefully now they understand that anytime they start to build something, they can't just like, sit in the bulldozer out there, that they really have to talk to them first. Um, and then that Permit Extension Act that we had, um, some dealings with that extended permits for a couple of years.
Right, right.
Um, Governor Patrick just signed a new bill which extended that, so it's now going to be four years. And it's for any permits from 2008 to 2012. And then, um, is it, uh, well, I mean, just a few quick things on the settlement agreement.
Oh, for...
Is all the tree yard?
I need to walk out, is that the last thing?
Yeah, that's the last thing.
Oh, actually, I had a question before that. What's the status on the Riverway? I knew they were going to come in, then you would talk to them, they were going to submit something. Are they on the agenda at some point?
They are supposed to come in for the second meeting in September.
Okay, that's all. And before we, you leave, you want to approve the amendments?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
I, uh...
I can, I can leave, leave then.
Okay, yeah. I, I have a motion to approve the, uh, Situit Planning Board minutes for July 12th, 2012 and the minutes for July 26th, 2012.